All right, welcome to the Provo Municipal Council Work Session Meeting. It is Tuesday, February 1st at 12:35 PM. Meetings of the Municipal Council are now being held in hybrid fashion. That is, members of the public can continue to view council meetings on YouTube and Facebook, or they may attend in person in the council chamber at the Provo City Center. The coronavirus pandemic is not yet over. We encourage everyone who is eligible to get vaccinated. Protect yourselves and others by following the protocols set by the CDC and our state and local health departments. This meeting is being broadcast live on the web on the Provo City Council YouTube channel. There where it will also be available for on-demand viewing. I remind participants to mute your microphone when not speaking to minimize the potential for background noises and conversations to be picked up, recorded, and broadcast for all to hear. In the chamber, we have Bill Fillmore, Catrice McKay, Travis Hoben, Davis Shipley, Rachel Whipple from the council. Online, we have George Hanley. And that's it for now. We also are joined by Wayne Parker, CAO from the city, and Cliff Strachan, and Brian Jones, and several council member staff, council members of the council staff. Shannon Ellsworth is attending on Zoom, and we were just joined by Mayor Michelle Kufusi. Welcome. All right. The opening prayer will be provided by me, Travis Hoben. Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful to be here today to represent this great city. We're grateful that we have the opportunity to serve in this role. Please help us that as we go throughout the day today, that we'll be able to digest all the information and make good decisions on behalf of the citizens of Provo. And we're grateful for this responsibility and recognize the great responsibility it is. We ask for a blessing on all those who are struggling with COVID. And please help that as a city and a state, we can get through this quickly and move forward. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen. I guess we'll just jump in. We have a policy item referred to us from the Landmarks Commission. Okay, it looks like we've got. It just proposed that we approve the following minutes. December 14th, 2021, council meeting minutes and the January 18th, 2022 work meeting minutes. Are there any objections or requested changes? Okay. That is approved by you. I declare the minutes approved by unanimous consent. Although this is a public meeting, only the presenters and those invited by the council may speak or ask questions unless otherwise invited by the chair. Please wait to speak until called on by the council chair. Okay, I think we're my notes are on track now. All right. We have a resolution adding the structure known as the Milner Wright Home located at 1115 East, 640 South. Adding it to the Provo Landmarks Registry. This is part of the Provost Neighborhood. We have 10 minutes for this, but maybe try to use five in case we get some questions. This is Dustin Wright, planner.
Thank you. Yeah, I won't need the 10 minutes, but yeah, I'll just kind of give you a brief overview. It's been a little while since the council's seen a landmarks nomination. So are excited to be able to bring that to you today. In this case, it's a property owner that's listing or would like to list her property on the local Provo Landmarks Register. And so she's nominated her property located at 1115 East, 640 South. And it is a, you know, a historic home here in the city. And the city staff has reviewed the application and checked it with our our code, our landmarks code to make sure it meets the criteria to be listed on on their staff's findings is that it does. We took it to the Landmarks Commission and presented it to them. And they forwarded their positive recommendation to list this property on the Landmarks Register. So the positive recommendation from the Landmarks Commission is before you as well. But yeah, it's a it's a nice home. If there's specific questions tonight, the applicant will be there. And and she knows a lot of the history on the home and probably be able to answer any questions you have there. If you have any for me about the process or anything like that, I'd be happy to try to answer those at this time.
It's true. Yeah, thank you so much. I remember this came up before and staff had some reservations and wanted to study it some more. What are the consequences of this historical landmark designation? And what does it mean besides just notation somewhere?
Yeah, so being on the landmarks register provides that property owner with some opportunities for rehabilitation tax credits. So as they work on their property, they can apply for those tax credits to help offset some of the cost of rehabilitating the property.
Does it state or federal tax credit?
It's it's both. There's a 20% state credit and a 20% federal credit. There's opportunities to get low interest loans on rehabilitation efforts as well. So there's incentives to be on there. And then there's also protections provided by being on the register as far as any type, anytime there's going to be a modification to the property, they'd bring it to Landmarks Commission and and they'd get a certificate of appropriateness for the proposed works of you know, if there was an addition or something that they were looking at, they'd take it there first and say, well, this alter it and make it so it's changed enough to lose its historic significance, or would that be appropriate? So there's protections and there's incentives.
So there's trade offs that you tax incentives and lending incentives perhaps. But then you kind of put your house in a straitjacket in terms of changes you might want to make to it, right?
Sure, you could look at it that way.
Okay. How many do we have in the city? How many homes are under the landmark designation roughly?
Say roughly in the range of around 100 or so properties.
Thank you. Appreciate the information.
Yeah.
So I was looking at the application and it talks about who the important or significant people were that were involved in the city, who had been associated with the house. How is that level of significance measured? That seems to be a very squishy thing.
Yeah, so there's different criteria in the code. And so one of those is are there associated events or persons of significant history in Provo? And so, you know, we took a look at that one and it was, you know, for a long time in the history of Provo, there was a large dairy farm. And it sounds like from the history that we kind of read through there that there was a lot of connection to that dairy farm in Provo for its size and how it interacted with the community and things of that nature. So I think that was was the probably the main part of meeting that criteria. Yeah, it is a, you know, some probably more than others, but it's kind of trying to gauge if that's the most important thing or not. But that's kind of a a tricky standard, I think, to to gauge.
Well, the house looks great. I love the idea of being able to protect it.
What was that?
I was just saying that the house looks good. Their improvements that they've made to it are consistent with the architecture. And I'd like to be able to help them protect that. Because that's one of the nice things about this designation is because that way these structures are able to contribute to the character of the neighborhood of the community.
Correct, yeah, it helps, I think, revitalize. You know, she showed some images of of the property before she bought it back in the 80s. And she put a lot of effort into restoring and getting it looking better. And I think, you know, property owners, when they have some either desire to do that or some financial incentives to do that, I think it helps improve the neighborhood as well. So I think it's a great program to to have in our city and to be able to preserve our our historic history and and be able to help neighborhoods look better and improve as well. So.
All right, any other questions? This was a discussion only, this item scheduled for tonight's council meeting. Okay, thank you. Item on the action agenda and implied motion on a resolution of the city provo declaring support for the locally preferred alternate. All right, I'm going to trade Dave Shipley for his notes. Another policy item referred from the planning commission and ordinance amending Provo City Code, Chapter 15.08, fees, citywide application presented by Dixon Homes.
I'm going to catch my breath from the heart attack. He just gave me the other item. It's like, no, we're not ready for that one yet. Yeah, so we're all good.
Yeah, I'm missing a few pages. It was missing a few pages.
It's okay. It's okay, we're on the same page now. So just a little background, this is something that the administration, particularly mayor's office, legal office has been looking at for a bit, recognizing that there were some, maybe some deficiencies or some areas in our code that didn't quite adequately address impact fees when certain questions come up or appeals. And so Camille Williams and the legal department, myself, and then the directors of the departments that were impacted by this, took a look at it, gathered some information, then made some recommendations. That was reviewed by the planning commission. And so here to present on that now. Brian Jones also will jump in on some of this just to give some of the legal background. But but really, what this allows us to do is so we've had on the books for some time now, the ability, since we've had impact fees for people to a developer contractor, interested party to 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 appeal the impact fee that's being imposed if they feel that it's not commensurate with the impact that they're making. And then that is the premise of impact fees is that developers will pay an impact to offset the impact that they're bringing to an already existing system that has been paid for. And they are now bringing new users on to the system. And and therefore there's additional impacts and they're paying a portion of that for going forward. So there has been this appeal process. And frankly, in some areas, we've used it quite frequently. For example, the traffic impact fee are based on national standards. And someone coming in doing a local development says, well, that's a national standard. We think that it's a little more refined here in Provo. And they'll hire a competent traffic engineer who will do a study. And it may turn out that there is maybe less traffic generated than what was previously or thought about on a national basis. And the impact fee is adjusted. And we've been very comfortable with that process. But we've also had groups come in on other impacts and challenge those. And so this is just establishing a couple of things. One, a process for which criteria they will then bring for consideration. And it also establishes a process that's a little less political because it used to be that the the appeal process would require going to the mayor. And that, while that's not necessarily a bad thing, it just it has the potential of being a little more political in nature. And so what it what it establishes is a a group of directors and the chief administrative officer to weigh that. At no point in the process, though, is the applicant barred from appealing straight to a court of law, which of competent jurisdiction of where they could make that appeal. And so that those are the changes, those are the high level changes. If you have any questions on the particulars of any of the language between Brian and myself, I think we can ask anything that you would have, you'd add to that, Brian.
The only thing I'd add is just if anybody took a deep look at this between Thursday and Monday, the one that's in your packet now is slightly different. There were some format, when this went to planning commission, there were some formatting problems with the paragraph hierarchy. The text was fine, but there was those problems had didn't have a chance to get fixed before going to planning commissions. We fixed them afterwards. And there was I'm trying to remember now whether it was sewer or stormwater. I think it was sewer that had some language in it that had been kind of unconce- under consideration, but had been rejected and had been accidentally not taken out when it went to planning commission. So that's been changed since. There were some, there were some language under the sewer section that I think it was sewer. It was either sewer, stormwater, or water. Because I remember what what sparked the conversation was one of those departments, one of those divisions contacted us and said, hey, we'd like the the language copied and put into ours. And we said, no, we're actually taking that language out because what it allowed was for an applicant or an app, an appellant to kind of relitigate the the actual impact fee structure. And so anyway, we so that I think was still in one of the paragraphs when it went to planning commission, we've taken that out. And all three of those sections now just say that the calculation has to be done by an engineer and meet engineering standards.
So Brian, in your words, and what is the essence of the amendment?
Well, I think there, I think I would say there's two things that it does. One, prior to this, we, well, I'd say it does three things. State code made some changes to what's required to be allowed in the process of an appeal that our previous appellate process didn't comply with. So it complies with those. Two, our previous appellate process was very sparse and didn't, it didn't do things like establish a standard of proof or say what needed to be submitted with the 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 appeal. It didn't, it basically just said you can appeal without laying out any process. So this fixes that and lays out a very specific process, very specific criteria. And then the third thing that it does is it makes clear that an appeal, there's a two step, there's two ways you can challenge an impact fee as a developer. One is when the impact fee is actually enacted, developers and other people have 30 days from the time it's enacted to challenge the manner of its enactment. Or in other words, the way it was calculated. We don't want to be re-litigating that during these kind of appeals. So we made clear here that what's being, that what we're allowing people to appeal here is the way the calculation applies to their project, not the way that the calculation was done in the first place. So those are the three things that we were trying to fix.
Okay, thank you.
It just made me curious as I was reading this, how many, how many times in the past few years has the mayor had to make a decision on an appeal?
One, okay. This is not a common occurrence.
Good. Well, I was just wondering from the director's perspective, like, do we want to be looking at this all the time?
Let me take that back. One that went all the way to the mayor. We modified on a, on a, not a routine basis, but when it comes up, I mentioned the transportation. We've also done this on sewer and water for some of the larger projects. And those projects actually put in improvements in anticipation on a part of their project. And rather than double charging them, having them do the offsite improvements and charging an impact fee, we've given them a credit.
Thank you.
So can we go on the new version to line like 145, this 3A parks impact fee? I want to see how that got fixed with the oh, this is so different. So what I'm looking at on mine has the department standards for individual review. And then A is parks impact fee. Where did that part go?
So that is now, so that's 3A at line 121.
So in this section, okay, good. That fixed it because the previous version didn't have the and on V. And I was worried about that.
Right, right, yeah. Yeah, there were a couple other typos that got fixed as well as I edited the, because of the of the timing of it going to planning commission and and additionally, the attorney, Camille Williams, who did the, who did a great amount of work on this and some really great work, but she was ill last week. So I actually didn't get this until Monday to do the final review. And so I fixed a few of those things, those kind of things.
Okay. I think I just need to read the new version then because most of my comments are on this old one, I think they've probably been resolved.
Okay.
Any other questions? This is discussion only, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. We're back on track. Policy item three. An ordinance, an ordinance amending the zone map classification of approximately 1.1 acres at 669 South, 1600 West from A11 agriculture to R18, one family residential and authorizing a development agreement, Sunset Neighborhood, presented by Aaron Ardmore, planning supervisor.
Thank you. So so this one is on the west side. It's a, it's a pretty small rezone. If we can go to the map just to orient. This one went through staff review. There's some kind of technical issues to work out with the applicant on the right of way with 1600 West being a future collector. How much space was needed for that future right of way with those details haven't worked out? Do we not have the? Sorry. There it is. So it's right there, just south of elementary school, not including the corner, but just the two half pieces below that. So they are proposing a, an R18 zone, which does meet the the general plan standard and the future land use map. That was adopted by the city council as far as density goes. With such a small piece of property, we had to be creative on access where private driveways are limited on a collector's type of street. All four of the lots will actually access off a shared central driveway. But other than that, staff has recommended approval, planning commission the same. And I'll be prepared to present this again tonight.
Any questions? Okay, thanks, Aaron. All right, item number four, an ordinance amending the zone map classification of approximately 1.39 acres of real property from 46 West to 90 West on 800 North from residential comfort, residential conservation to campus mixed use and authorizing a related development agreement, North Park Neighborhood, presented by Aaron as well.
All right. So this one is is a bigger project. It's a, it's a transition from the RC zone, which is in, as you're aware, the a bunch of neighborhoods, mostly pioneer neighborhoods from 2002. This, this particular area has four kind of aging homes on along 800 North that the the property owner has now proposed to to take down and replace with an apartment building. And to do that, they requested the campus mixed use zone. The campus mixed use zone. If you can recall, I don't know if it was a couple of years ago, was established between University Avenue and 900 East, just south of BYU, along that whole stretch from kind of the campus border to to 700 North. So this zone has been kind of laid out in that area. This is just across University Avenue from that. Staff feels that because of the location, because of the the proximity to campus, the proximity to transit, this is a good location for campus mixed use zoning. And we've recommended approval. The planning commission got caught up a little bit on the concept plan end of it. But we we believe that this is still a good zone change to make and are still recommending approval on this. And I'm prepared for any questions you might have on this one.
So they got, they were looking at the concept plan and I saw some notes on that. But but also was it consistent with the planning that the parking wasn't sufficient as well? Or was that something that they weren't as?
Right, that's that's a part of it. So.
That's what you meant by the concept plan, that it just doesn't have enough parking. They're getting a an exception, yeah.
Yeah, so say the zone is approved, the applicant would have to come back with the project plan if they stuck to that same idea, the same layout as the concept plan showed. They would have to get approval from planning commission on a transportation demand management program that reduces the parking from a required 93 spaces to, and the concept plan, they showed 83. Yeah. So that that's a future step that they'd have to go through and get approved if the zone was.
And the applicant's response on that is that we're forcing them to have more setbacks than normal because of the potential for the 800 North expansion, correct?
Yeah, that's a big part of it. I think that that comes into play. I think the applicant also shared his experience with managing other apartment areas, our apartments in the area and having a similar ratio where the city would require 1.5 for one bedroom. He's proposing 1.34. So pretty close. But with that experience with the added amenities, there's a, there's increased bike storage proposing the concept, things like that. Hales Engineering did a traffic study as well and to provide some background on it.
So so we authorized the Amanda Knight Building to be redone and not have hardly any parking, right? They're just, it wasn't going to happen. My, I guess my curiosity at this point is what has the experience been? Is that filled yet? Has have have, I mean, people were concerned that it would just create this proliferation of parking all over places that it shouldn't be.
I don't have a good feeling on on if we've gotten any concerns or complaints on that. We haven't received any complaints.
Because I drive by that and I just didn't know if it's not even full, though. Is it, do we know if it's even filled at this point? Okay. Okay, thank you.
Bill, let me go to George online. All right, George Hanley, go ahead.
Thanks, Aaron. This is a similar question. I'm curious if I read this correctly, is this potentially an agreement that the owner would then I mean, it seemed to me that in the Amanda Knight case, there was public notice to any potential renters. I don't, I don't remember if there was an incentive, if they didn't have a car. But because of its location, there was a, they were going to try to reward people for coming without a car so that they could keep within their limit. Is that is, is that the comparable kind of arrangement that this that is being contemplated here?
Right, the applicant has noted, kind of through the TDM and also at the planning commission hearing, he might also speak on this tonight. But his, his plan is to manage it to reduce the amount of cars that come to the property. So when when approving contracts, he's going to be looking at how many cars they plan on bringing and and manage it that way. He could probably give more details on that and his experience of that type of management program.
Thank you. I had, I had one other question. And that is, in the general plan document that we're going to be discussing later, there's some data in there about housing needs in the city. And it mentions that our air areas of rentals that are of the greatest need are in the lowest range, priced range, and in the highest price range, but not in the middle range. And based on my loose familiarity with what average rental prices are for students these days, it looks like the typical student rental is in the in the middle range. And we already have a surplus of that kind of housing in the city from what that data showed. So I'm wondering if staff have any concerns about whether or not we need this kind of housing type at this market level? Or or is there another factor here I'm not, I'm not aware of?
I think I can address that a little bit. I'm not a developer in any, in any sense, but the the amount of apartments that we see going up and continuing to be requested to be built and the rental prices associated with those types of apartments in Provo, I would say there is enough demand for for this separate project. But again, maybe the applicant could speak on that better tonight.
Thank you.
Mr. Fillmore.
Yeah, Aaron, I just had a few questions for you. First, what is the nominal parking requirement and what is it proposed to be reduced to?
Okay, so. Global numbers. Yeah, so apartment projects. Yeah, so apartment projects, one bedrooms, they require per code one point five spaces per unit.
I guess I can do the math.
The applicant is, is requesting a reduction to one point three four per unit. So it's, it's a drop from ninety-three required stalls to proposed eighty-three in the concept plan. Again, that's a concept plan, but that's, that's where it was at.
Okay, and the applicant is saying that he would require by contract some re, some ceiling on the number of cars.
That's what I understand.
And that's how is he going to enforce that? And how are you going to enforce the enforcement of the contract?
These are great, great questions for tonight.
You don't have an answer?
I don't have answers to those right now. But I know the applicant will be there tonight.
Okay.
He's here in the room, but if you wanted to, I don't know, I don't know if you do that in a study session, but he'll, he'll be here tonight as well.
Let's see how many other questions we have and how far behind we are.
Just, just a couple others if I might. The, what were the, were, were there any reasons for the planning commission denial besides the parking issue?
Um, they had some complications with the zone itself, kind of understanding the, the purpose and objectives of the campus mixed use. Especially. The, I think the, the fact that mixed use is in the title of the zone, kind of complicated the, the discussion there. Where there's no sense of required commercial through the CMU zone. It's just offered as an option for, for developers. I think that became an issue through the hearing.
Okay, I, I see Mr. Mettler's in the audience. We'd be happy to invite him to comment on that if you'd like.
Well, Joe, Bill, let's see how many other questions we have from other council members, and then if we have time, I'm glad to have them come up. Shannon Ellsworth had raised her hand. Go ahead, Councilmember Ellsworth.
Yeah, thanks. I'm trying to remember the details. At the planning commission, was there some concern about the ownership of the property? Like there was a combining of properties? Or did I misunderstand that?
The, the applicant owns all of the properties proposed for their zone change. There was some discussion about phasing, phase one, phase two, but I don't think there was a concern about the ownership of the property.
Okay, and nothing's being rezoned that's not under the applicant's ownership, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Councilmember McKay.
Um, so this is, what I think is interesting and what I do think that. We may need to discuss as a council at some point is the TDM zoning and my understanding is that since we've implemented it. Basically ninety percent or more of our applications all come in under TDM, right? Because they can get a deal, it's cheaper for the developers, it's. So why aren't they gonna try, right? And we know parking is an issue all over. And I, I appreciate that this development is only ten short and. The ratio is one point three four, correct? And you know, that's not, that's not a big difference, but TDM allows them to go to one, right? Technically, they could.
It can go no lower than one to one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And. So I don't know, I just, I just wonder. Where parking's already an issue and we received a lot of emails about parking. That we're just not opening things up to every, you know, every discussion being about parking with so many developments over and over. The, I'm wondering if what Shannon was referring to was the idea that they were able to do CMU. Did I say that correctly?
Yeah.
Zoning because they put the Foxwood in it, right? And without that, they wouldn't have had the acreage to just to legally do the CMU.
They could still do it, but they'd have a reduced number, unit number.
It can still be considered.
If they only included the front four properties without the Foxwood apartments.
So.
They could still do a CMU, they just have additional regulation.
As opposed to how many units, sixty, sixty-four?
Sixty-two proposed in the concept plan.
It would be required to be how many if it didn't have the Foxwood added into the acreage?
They would be kept at a ratio or a maximum density of forty units per acre, which I think provided them, would provide them about thirty-one units with acreage. Without the Foxwood apartments. Does that make sense the way I explain that?
So it allows them to double their units.
Can I ask a question adjacent to that question?
Sure can.
Is there, has this been done in the past where we allow someone to use an adjacent property to increase their density? That's, it seems like that's not a very common practice.
Well, I think the, kind of the root of the question is whether CMU is appropriate zone for, for all of these properties. Or whether it's just appropriate for the four properties along eight hundred North. If it's appropriate for all the properties, I, I think that the numbers and the concept plans become less important than. Whether it's appropriate zone in the appropriate place.
Councilmember Whipple.
So I'm not clear as to what the phase two portion is, like how they'll be changing the Foxwood apartments. Will they be adding density there as well?
The phase two shows a removal of the Foxwood apartments and then forty units in the concept plan for the phase two.
And are there sixteen units there now?
There's sixteen units there now.
Okay. Do we also have a timeline for completing those two different phases?
From what I understand, there's no hard dates, but because Mr. Mettler's family kind of owns and manages some of these properties, they'd want to. Take care of the first phase, be financially comfortable and then move on to the second phase.
Okay, cause my understanding from some of these comments is that there was real worry that we would do this extra high density on the, the new development. And then maybe not do Foxwood at all, and so that. The phase one would be completely out of, out of whack for what the requirements are with this zone.
I see.
We could always require a development agreement to approve this, right? That would require phase two, if that is a concern.
Yeah, I mean, if, if the development agreement is, is part of it, just whatever the, the applicant could proffer to, to make the council feel comfortable moving forward.
You look like you have a comment, Mr. Jones.
Well, yeah, I was just gonna say. Recognize again, as we've talked before, we don't require development agreements, but we. Express concerns that may make the. Approval of the rezone inappropriate. It's up to the developer to proffer whether they're willing to enter into a development agreement to address those concerns. But it's very common to do development agreements for developers to, to proffer development agreements when there's a multi-phase project. Because it's actually advantageous to them too, because if they don't, one, one of the commitments that the, the city usually makes in a development agreement is to agree not to rezone the property until the second phase is built. If there's no such development agreement, the city could always actually re, could change the zoning of the phase two property before it's built. And prevent, prevent it from being built. Now, the, what gets a little bit tricky with what you were saying a minute ago, Councilor Hoban, is that. I don't know that in a development agreement, we can obligate them to build phase two. What we can do is say. Nothing other than what was shown to us as phase two can be built.
To me, that's the important point that I'm sorry I wanted to make. The developer is proposing something substantially less than what the CMU zone would allow. So when he gave us these plans, we have had conversations with him that we would expect, staff would expect a development agreement based on what you've submitted. That ties your hands to this so that you don't get a zone change and then come in and ask for something different. He's limited his building height to forty-five feet. He can go seventy-five feet in that zone. So a staff, we would like the development agreement to tie some of those things down so that we can't be taken advantage of in the future. Limiting the north piece to the, what the concept plan shows today, the forty units, I think would be very helpful. Cause I don't want to have an argument five years from now that he tries to put eighty units on there, that type of thing. Okay, in relation to Mr. Fillmore's question about parking and contracts, that is a very pertinent question. We have property managers in the city that are very diligent, but now about how their parking is managed and not having more cars on site than they have spaces. And we never have complaints from those owners. We have others who made those promises to the city and we have continual. Violations on their property. So it really comes down to property management. Once they're violating what they've promised us, it's hard to enforce. It's difficult to go after.
So. Mr. Fillmore, I'm sorry, but let's have your questions for the developer tonight during the broader discussion. Just to keep us on track. I'm like committed tonight or today, we're gonna stay on track. All right, thanks for being patient. Thank you, Aaron and Bill and the developer for coming. We'll see you tonight. All right. We now have a presentation of the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget calendar presented by John Borget. No?
So I'd like to excuse John. He has headed out of town with his family, so he is unable to be with us. To introduce myself, I am Crystal Howard and I am the budget analyst in the finance department. Today I'm here to discuss the budget calendar, which is just an outline of what to expect over the next couple of months and what the bulk of our time. Is going to be spent on in finance to create this next year's budget. Um, I'm still pretty new to this position. I've only been here for a couple of months, so this is my first official budget season. And as I have reviewed the calendar, I can only imagine how busy we are going to be with all of these items. But I am very excited to really dig in and learn them more in detail and find out what makes our budget the budget. Um, I do want to point out that Kelsey Zarbok, our budget officer, is the one who completed this budget calendar. She's on maternity leave right now and I can't express how thankful I've been to have this outline in her absence. She did a really great job. I'm not gonna go every, over every line item or even into too much detail. It's just gonna be a brief overview and summary of what the next couple of months have in store. So to begin, welcome to February. Today is February first, so that means that the top box of the calendar. All those to-do items were completed in previous months and to summarize those months. Oops, during the month of January, finance met with both the mayor and her staff and the city council staff to go over this budget calendar, much like we're doing today. And then the information gathering process also began. So a lot of the data or the data that is on the budget comes from information provided to finance by the departments. So we really thank them and appreciate them for helping us with this process. And you'll notice a pattern as we go on through this calendar that finance will receive information from departments. We will speak with, we will discuss about that information with the administration and then we will bring it to council. And in January, that process began with departments turning in their projected revenues. For the upcoming fiscal year as well as those departments who have five-year capital improvement projects, they turned in those CIP project outlines as well. So now back to our current month of February. Departments will be assigned the task this month to review their operating budgets for next year. And to start preparing any supplemental orders or supplemental requests that they wish to submit. And on February tenth, the process of discussing the department's information with administration begins. With a meeting between the mayor and finance to discuss the projected revenues. And then on the sixteenth and seventeenth, a series of meetings will occur between finance, the mayor and those department directors with CIP projects. And then. Finance will then meet with city council staff to also go over the CIP projects and the revenues. And I just want to note that throughout this budget process, finance is meeting with city council staff on a monthly basis. Just to make sure any updates that are needed are being given and any answers that are being questioned or any questions are being answered that may arise. And then one more thing to note, in February on the fifteenth, the next work meeting. Departments will begin their department budget presentations and looking forward to March. Those department presentations will continue during all of the work meetings that are in March. And on March first, finance will also be to that work meeting to discuss the revenue projections. And also on March first, but outside of the meeting, all of you council members will receive the CIP report. And that is a combination of all of the CIP projects and their details for your review. And then on March fifteenth, finance will be back to that, that work meeting to discuss the CIA report, CIP reports with you all. Um, and then. Finance again will meet with council staff to give an update on the budget process and during this month. Departments will turn in any changes they wish to make to the consolidated fee schedule as well as any changes they need to make to their department payroll schedules. And now we are going into April. On the fifth, finance will again meet with the mayor, this time to review operating budgets. And supplemental requests that were received previously. Then in mid-April, the mayor will do her final review of the tentative budget up until that point. And then in the background during this month, finance is going to be really, be working really hard to. Finalize the budget and make sure any suggestions given to us by administration are implemented into that budget. Because as we get into May, on the third. The mayor will present the tentative budget to the council and then on the seventeenth, that tentative budget will be tentatively adopted. And then in May, there will also be time set aside for budget retreats if they are needed. And now we are into June, which could be the final month of our budget season. There are two council meetings scheduled during June and during each of those council meetings, there will be budget items dedicated to public comment. For the public to make any comment they may have on our budget. And the state deadline for the final budget to be adopted is June thirtieth. And that could potentially be the end of our season unless there is a property tax increase proposed. If that happens, then in July, we will have truth and taxation hearings and in August, that would be our new date to have our budget adopted. So like I said, super quick, high-level overview. I'm really excited to dig in and as you can see, we're gonna be back here a lot, so I look forward to those discussions as well. Do you have any questions?
All right, we will definitely question your answers, by the way.
You'll never forget me. Thank you.
Okay, a presentation regarding Provo City's use of federal dollars from the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA. Presented by our CAO Wayne Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. First, I don't know that we've officially welcomed Crystal to the budget team, but she is, she comes to us from Community Neighborhood Services. Where she has been an absolutely phenomenal superstar in our organization, so we're very happy to have her here. She's got her maiden city council presentation done, so. Now we're back to, back to normal again, so. We've also been working very closely with Crystal on the American Rescue Plan and so we wanted to walk through some changes that have occurred in recent weeks. Terms of the guidance we've received from the federal government and, and there's some really good news in this presentation. It will generate a lot of work and interest. But it's, but it's really good news. So start first with the, with the history, let me see if I can, there we go. So you may recall, there were two federal actions taken, one very early in the pandemic and one. A little bit later, the first one was the CARES Act and we've been through the CARES Act allocations and, and as you may recall. We were able, under the CARES Act, to essentially reimburse the city for public safety expenses that were related to the pandemic. And that reimbursement allowed us to essentially free up. Several million dollars in funds that could be used for purposes other than specifically related to the pandemic. And that was a good thing. We set aside some dollars in CIP for the relocation of fire station number one. We programmed some dollars to work on the West Side Grocery Store and, and a number of other priorities. Council allocated some of those dollars to supplement the general plan with the sustainability plan and the gateways plan and so on. So those funds helped us fund some very high key priorities for the city. The American Rescue Plan came with, initially with significantly more strings attached than the CARES Act. There were far more limited projects that could be funded. And, and some really stringent requirements around what, what's called in the act, the replacement of lost revenue to the city. While we had some lost revenue as the result of the pandemic, it tended to be very compartmentalized. They were serious revenue losses for individual operations, but in the grand scheme of things, they weren't all that significant. And so we were kind of worried about the, you know, how we might handle some of those kinds of issues. So again, under ARPA, the eligible uses supported the public health response to the pandemic. Address negative impacts to workers, families, small businesses. Response to the Pandemic, addressed negative impacts to workers, families, small businesses, and nonprofits that happened as the result of the economic challenges in the early days of the pandemic, to replace public sector revenue loss, which we talked briefly about, to offer premium pay for essential workers. And what some cities have done with the ARPA is to, is to work to give bonuses, for example, to public health workers who were overwrought and significantly stressed during the, during the pandemic, done some for first responders as well. And then the last one, which is where the federal government really tried to incentivize us, was to use these for water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure, in, in large measure because of its positive effects on stimulating the economy, putting construction workers back to work and doing a lot of things that really suffered as the result of the, of the early stage of the pandemic. So what has changed, and there are a couple of really interesting things here, which opened some new doors for us. So the early guidance, as we mentioned, on, on revenue replacement was very, very small. It was a very tiny window in which we could operate. And so we had to look at, and we did, in this year's budget, we programmed some ARPA money to, to reimburse, for example, the Justice Court, who essentially basically just shut down during the, during the pandemic because of state judicial council rules, as well as the golf course and a couple of other functions where we recognized we were going to have some really serious revenue challenges. And we did budget some reimbursement for that in the current fiscal year. But, but some new guidance has given us a new option. And I, I want you to think about this for just a minute. We are in tax season, and as I'm working on my taxes with my little TurboTax program at home, trying to figure out where everything is going, I get to make a decision about my, my deductions. So I can take an IRS authorized standard deduction, which is a given number for, for those married filing jointly, or I can itemize, and I can pick whichever ones to my advantage. And so if itemization works for me, and generally that works for me quite well, then I will itemize. But if my itemized expenses would fall below the standard deduction, I can take the standard deduction, and that works great. Well, the US Treasury, who runs the IRS, decided to use that same principle in the new guidance we've received on ARPA, ARPA funding, which says essentially that for cities of our size, with our federal allocation, we can, we can use a standard deduction of up to $10 million for lost revenue. It doesn't matter what our lost revenue was. If it's under $10 million, we can take up to $10 million in lost revenue. If we lost more than $10 million, then we could itemize, and we could go to the Treasury and say, we had, we could document lost revenue of something in excess of $10 million, and we can get that allocation to reimburse ourselves. Well, as I mentioned, our lost revenue was significantly less than $10 million. And so what this does essentially is open the door for the use of that number up to $10 million for purposes that were not specifically itemized in the ARPA. So as we think about that opportunity, it creates some, some new opportunities for us to think about things that we could fund on a one-time basis that, that might meet some longer-term capital improvement needs in the city, or equipment needs, or other things like that. And so, so we've obviously been giving some thought to that. And what we'd like to do is talk about a process by which you give some thought to that, and, and that we collaborate on an allocation of this lost revenue money. So again, just a few thoughts before we talk about next steps. So first of all, there are obviously fewer strings than other uses of ARPA. One of the things we're trying to sort out with Treasury is whether things like Davis Bacon wage requirements, or, or other kinds of federal standards on capital projects would apply to this money. We don't have anything definitive on that yet, but we're expecting some guidance in the next few weeks out to all counties and cities and states around, around the use of these, these lost revenue reimbursements. We want to make sure we stay focused because these are one-time allocations. We don't want to put those into ongoing expense and then create a, a financial cliff down the road when that money dries up. We still are under the obligation of the original ARPA, that any money we use has to be obligated by the end of calendar 24 and fully expended by calendar 20 into calendar 26, which means that we have very little time to think about a very expensive new project. Probably needs to be one that's already in the pipeline, so that we don't, we don't lose the window of getting all the design and contracting work done before the end of calendar 24. And again, talked about some uncertainty about the federal requirements. So as we've, as the administrations talked about this, and we've talked about our experience with the CARES Act and with the council, we'd, we'd like to offer a few of the following steps or options. First of all, we probably need to define exactly what the $10 million is or isn't. You know, do we want to take less than that and put more of the money into water sewer infrastructure? Do we want to maximize the $10 million for other purposes? We want to have a conversation about that. The $23 million that would be remaining from our ARPA allocation, we would suggest be used for water and wastewater infrastructure, because, again, particularly from the water treatment plant as part of aquifer storage and recovery, or the wastewater treatment plant that's already under construction. Obviously, we've had to pare down both of those projects, given construction inflation recently, and it would be good to backfill some of that. But there are also other eligible purposes that we talked about, and that may be worth a conversation with the council. So we'd suggest that we try to do a couple of things kind of simultaneously. As we met with council leadership last week on this topic, or two weeks ago, I guess, on this topic, the suggestion was that the administration prepare a recommendation for both the $10 million and the $23 million segments, just so you can see what projects we're thinking about, what are priority for us. We also suggested that we invite the council in some form or fashion to come up with their own list. They might use ours as guideline. They might just, you know, come up with, come up with what you think is most important. And, and so we'd like to invite you to do that. And then what we'd suggest is that we take those two lists as, you know, common or not, things in common as they might be, and have the council create maybe an ad hoc committee to work with administration over a couple of weeks to try to come up with a, a combined recommendation, which could be made to the full council for, for appropriation. And so that's our, that's our thinking. We'd like to probably get this done early enough in the budget process that we could know what's going to be allocated, so our departments can make choices in their budget process that would dovetail in with what we're proposing to do with the ARPA. So we'd like to have something probably done mid to late March, so that we still have time to sort of insert those final decisions within the budget going forward into next fiscal year. So that's basically our presentation today. So good news from the standpoint of having lots more flexibility. The downside is that we're going to have to do some work between now and, and mid to late March. So happy to answer any questions you have. We're excited about working collaboratively with you on this process to ensure that the highest priority projects for the community are the ones that we're putting in the mix. So.
Thank you, Wayne. So are we, are you looking for some feedback today on how you would like to proceed on these options for next steps?
Well, I, I think our thinking, as we visited with Cliff a little bit about this, our thinking was that if you wanted to create an ad hoc committee, you're, you know, your council policy suggests that you have to have a mission statement and, you know, very clearly defined parameters around ad hoc committees. So our thinking was that, you know, you or leadership or, or someone would, would want to come back in two weeks and appoint an ad hoc committee, if that's the direction you want to go, and establish the ground rules. And then that would give us essentially kind of 30 days to work through the collaborative process. But we hope you'd be thinking in the meantime about projects that, you know, you have wanted to see done. And, you know, maybe go through a process with council staff of trying to develop that list in the meantime. So that, that would be our thinking.
Cliff, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that I think that expedite it is, council members should go ahead and indicate if they want to be on that committee, and also suggest if they have projects they'd like us to consider, or the city to consider, to submit those. And if, if you want to send all those to, to either Travis or me, we'll coordinate on getting all that information together.
Okay, let's go to Mr. Shipley.
Just to clarify, Mr. Parker, if you could. So the 23 that's remaining after the 10, so 33 between the two years, is that the net amount now after obligations that we've already, because we budgeted some of these obligations already?
It's really close. I mean, we had 23.8 or 33.8 million, and I think we've spent less than 100,000, 800,000, that. So it's somewhere north of 33.
And the second payment comes this year?
Second payment comes later this year, right?
So we've got first payments already in?
First payments in the bank and sitting in a reserve account waiting for appropriation.
And this might be a question that I need to, that we need to have Dave speak to with Public Works, but how, what, what, what is the deficit that we're dealing with now with that prop? Because in the CIP report, it's not clear to me. It, it says construction stalled at this point because of funding issues, but, but there's no way to tell what that means.
Yeah, yeah, we can certainly get you that.
Okay, thank you.
And we are working on some additional funding sources as well with the state and others. The state has some ARPA money that's been allocated for water and wastewater infrastructure. So we are working through, you know, potential grant or, or very low-interest loans that might help close some of the gap. So again, we'll know a little better in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Mrs. Ellsworth, or Ms. Ellsworth, I apologize.
Yeah, this is a comment, not a question, but I just want to make sure that this process, this is a comment from my fellow counselors, I want to make sure that this process is very meticulous, and that it's objective and not subjective. When we talked through this in years past, I don't feel like we were conscientious enough. And I don't know if we were proactive enough. So to my fellow counselors, I hope that we are very specific and very objective about this process. Because if we have a subjective process, it will undermine the outcome. So I just would advocate that the council, who has responsibility for budgets and funding, be very involved, very on top of this, and proactive in allocating these unique funds.
Mr. Hanley.
Thank you. Thank you, Wayne. One question I have, and I, and I apologize if I haven't understood this correctly, but as I recall, when we first talked about ARPA, we had had some discussion about, about this. And I remember worrying that if we rushed into creative ways to make good use of this money, which I'm certainly in favor of doing, we might bypass the very specific needs of our community, people who've been hit the hardest by the pandemic, businesses that have been hit hardest by the pandemic. So that remains an essential concern for me. And I don't, I don't know what kind of measures we have to indicate where our community has been hit the hardest, and where those funds might be most useful. You know, my, I know, you know, I'm, I'm just thinking about a lot of our humanitarian services in the, in the, in our community, who probably would have some good ideas for how we might be able to leverage some of these funds. I don't imagine that those are very high-priced items, but they, to my mind, are the first priority before we look at, look at other kinds of ways to use the funds. So I guess, yeah, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, sorry to interrupt. This morning, I had the awesome opportunity to speak with a class of, I think, fifth graders from Provost Elementary. And I asked them, what would you do with $30 million? And more than one said, we'd like to help poor people. We want to help homeless people. We would give that money to the poor. And I just feel like that is the best of our community, and I appreciate Mr. Hanley's comments.
I guess, Wayne, if, or Mr. Parker, excuse me, I, I think if my, my comment has a question, it's, do, do, do we have a sense going into this conversation of where those priorities might be, or where those impacts have been because of the pandemic? Do we need to gather that data? What, 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 what would we need to do?
Yeah, we certainly could try to identify some opportunities there. You know, I think, I, I think there were some very substantial efforts from the, through the CARES Act process with Utah County to try to address a number of those needs. There were millions of dollars given to nonprofits, which certainly benefited a lot of things that happened in Provo as the county seat. We also allocated somewhere north of $12 million, if I recall, to, for small business assistance. And we ended up, I think, getting the lion's share of that. Yeah, so, yeah, so again, so, so there has been some things done for sure. I mean, again, but that was early in the pandemic. There's, you know, it's changed as we've kind of come out of the original coronavirus issues, and now dealt with a couple of the variants, which have created different impacts than we maybe looked at the last time. So, yeah, we can, we can certainly help identify those. We can dive a little bit deeper into the federal guidance in terms of what to do in, in targeted, federally targeted neighborhoods, those that, you know, are particularly low income, or where there's a high percentage of Title I students in those that are defined by the Census Bureau. We can, we can help identify some, some physically targeted areas. I'm relatively certain that if you opened the door for our nonprofit community very broadly, I think it'd be, you'd be pretty quick to have requests that would well exceed the $20 million. And so that would not at all surprise me. So again, it's an, it's absolutely a balancing act. And we, this is part of the reason why we sort of opened this door unfettered, to your view, to make sure that we were seeing all the angles, and maybe some things that in the midst of our managing the city on a day-to-day basis, we see those needs very clearly and right up front. Sometimes we're not always aware of the, of the broader community need. So certainly open to that, be happy to, to work with your staff and do some good research and identify some options for moving forward.
Mr. Fillmore.
Two questions, Mr. Parker.
Yes, sir.
When are we likely to see your proposed list for the mayor's office?
I, you know, we've, we've already been given that a fair amount of thought. I think within the next couple of weeks, we could give you a, a list, you know, of both the $10 million component and the $23 million component, that would at least get into your hands, hopefully. I think we could do that before next council meeting.
The sooner the better, I think.
Absolutely.
Second question, do you have some sense of how much this 33 million might be augmented by state money?
Yeah, we are, we are not entirely sure yet. So we have, there was a state grant program that was clearly targeted at things like water infrastructure and so on. There was $50 million across the state, which is not very much money across the state. And to no one's surprise, our, our application for funding for the water treatment plant was ranked pretty low because money was spent primarily in, in rural Utah, which again, shouldn't be a surprise. I think the state decision makers looked at our $33 million allocation compared to Fairview. Probably shouldn't say Fairview, because that's where the governor lives. But, but communities in rural Utah, who didn't have allocations anywhere near this size, or didn't have an allocation at all, that, that, that's kind of where the money went. We have been working with the State Department of Environmental Quality to look at some ways to supplement our wastewater treatment plant to add additional treatment, necessarily capacity, but to treat for additional contaminants in the, in the effluent. And we think, we think we've got a good inside track on some of those dollars we're waiting for final decision from them. But we've had a preliminary meeting with their finance committee, and I think we've advanced a proposal that they will like. So we're, we're kind of waiting to see on that. So, so again, in, in, and in some cases, again, the, the other thing we know is that all of the money will not be available immediately, and nor candidly, would we want to necessarily get it all under contract at once, given what's happening with construction inflation and difficulty of finding contractors to work on big projects. We might want to space this out and phase it a little bit, and that might give us some time to work on some additional options as well. So, so again, while we might appropriate the money, this may be the kind of thing where if we're able to identify other funding streams, and we're talking about another one that's coming out of, out of the Federal Department of Transportation, that might open some doors for doing some significant roadwork or redesign of roads, particularly in the central part of the city. There's some new opportunities there that have just surfaced in the last couple of weeks. And we're preparing applications to go in in April to try to take advantage of some of that funding. So again, we're trying to keep our ear to the ground and find all, all available options.
Thank you.
Mrs. McKay.
Davis Bacon. What is that?
So Davis Bacon is a federal standard that's been in existence for 50 years, longer than I've been around, which, again, 50 years, I was pretty young back then. fifty years, longer than I've been around, which, again, fifty years, I was pretty young back then. But, but essentially it requires you to pay what's called a prevailing wage. And so when a contractor bids typically on our projects, because we don't use the Davis Bacon standard, you know, a contractor who can pay their employees a little bit less typically gets an advantage on the bid. And so under this standard, if you're using federal dollars, all wage rates are set by the federal government, and so so the only advantage you get in a competitive proposal is overhead and maybe being able to get materials cheaper because they're stockpiled. So it changes the competitive nature of the bid process, typically makes projects a little more expensive.
Okay. Cliff, I'm wondering if we can get an email sent to us that just goes over all the eligible purposes so that we can better?
Yep.
Do our email.
There's some good material at GFOA. That's probably the best place to find that.
Yeah, you, you may be asking for too much material, but we'll get you something that summarizes.
There is a lot.
Thank you.
Mrs. Whitwell.
You can just call me Ms. Whitwell. Okay. So I am actually at GFOA right now to see the, the approved purposes. I'm wondering if water and sewer would include things like stormwater?
So we're, we're again, waiting for a little bit of final guidance on that. There are a number of cities that are using it for stormwater purposes, although the, the guidance isn't entirely clear. So though, we will have probably some stormwater projects in our list of, of priorities from the administration. But, and again, I, I think we're open to that. I think it's likely we're going to get that broadened definition from Treasury, but, but it's not definitive yet.
So would something like levees be well outside? Or would that be okay?
Not necessarily, and that's, that's actually in our, in our current consideration list.
What about West Side Sewer Infrastructure upgrades?
Yes, that for sure would be.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, anything doing, dealing with culinary water, water storage, water production, or anything related to wastewater collection or treatment would clearly fit within the guidelines. And from a broadband perspective, actually, we're in pretty good shape in Provo, so we don't expect to bring you a broadband project.
Right, thank you.
Mr. Hanley. Your hand is up.
That was from previously, sorry.
No problem. Any other comments here, questions?
I guess I'll just say, I think I, I prefer some sort of like, if we have a really large allocation of funds to use it in a way that we might not, you know, be able to use it with a really large substantial project, as opposed to maybe dividing the funds up and having maybe a little impact on a lot of organizations, maybe have a lot of an impact on one specific project or something like that, but I don't know, it's just off the top of my head, you know, that's just kind of where I lean, but.
Well, this is, this is just a little bit like getting a bonus from work about six weeks before Christmas.
Right.
You come home and kind of talk to the kids and everybody's got their ideas. I, I think you're right, we'll use a similar process to figure out what's highest priority, what's the best use of these dollars, what might be things that we would spend them on that would be really, really hard to find money to do otherwise. I think those are all, and as Councilmember Ellsworth suggests, coming up with some kind of measurement matrix around how do you pick those projects, I, I think that's the kind of process we'd be looking to do with you.
So Cliff, do we need some sort of indication today if we want to create a count, an ad hoc committee, or do we just want to let the process start to unfold and then?
I, I think if, if we could have an indication of, of who's interested before next week's leadership, then we can go into the February fifteenth meeting knowing what we're setting up.
Ms. Ellsworth.
Thanks. I'd be interested in serving on said ad hoc committee, but I'm also interested in hearing from the council. Is this a committee where we would want to add people external to the council, like someone from the school board or someone from a nonprofit, just to think through some of these kind of tangential community issues that we don't always deal with?
May I? My suggestion to the council would be to keep it to the council, to the council members and any of the staff that's participating. And if you want to hear from other groups, then invite those other groups to meet, but keep, keep the committee tight and, and try to think of a really elegant word for it, but keep, so you can move quickly.
I did forget to say that we're having some technical difficulties and that the live stream went down. But there's a new YouTube livestream. It's in the chat. So. Mr. Fillmore, go ahead.
I just say that I think what Cliff is suggesting makes a lot of sense. I think if we need additional input, we can invite people to speak with us.
Oh, we'll hear from him. Okay, so I guess if anybody is, it sounds like Ms. Ellsworth is interested in participating in that committee, anyone else? Please speak up. Otherwise, you can email us in the next couple of days and we'll coordinate that before the next meeting. Go ahead. Mrs. McKay.
I'd be interested too.
I'm still trying to think through like what the committee's role really is, so I, I'm, I'm not sure, I guess is what I'm saying, but but I, I would like to be involved and, and, and maybe the committee's role is more of a liaison role with the administration to communicate back to the council and to make sure priorities of the council are communicated administrat, you know, just, just kind of a liaison thing. If, if it's more than that, I, I I, I just think anything else we do needs to be done as a whole group, right? So I, I don't know that that necessarily means a committee, or if it just means that a few of us attend, you know, some, some coordinating or correlating meetings with the administration and then make that a discussion for the whole, for the whole council.
I, I'd be perfectly happy, Dave, if you want to serve with Catrice and Shannon on that, in that capacity you outlined.
I would second Bill's, Mr. Fillmore's support of your involvement, Mr. Shipley.
Anytime there's money involved.
I think, I think our sense was that those, I, you might consider this more like sifting through the, through the priorities and projects and coming back with either some ideas or some, or a, or a strategy or even a list, whatever might come out of that committee process. I think that would be largely defined by counselors who are on the committee, but, but again, I, I think we're open. This was intended to be you know, and, and offer at a good collaboration. That's what we would hope to do.
Ms. Ellsworth.
I was gonna say, I think the committee's time would be well served by creating an, an objective process and then taking many, many suggestions on projects and running them through that, like an objective root brick or some kind of scale or grading system, and then presenting that to the whole council and saying, is this your expected outcome? Is there something here that doesn't fit? And trying to make it less subjective and more objective.
Okay, so we have three people who have expressed interest in serving on the ad hoc committee. Do we need a motion for that?
One we need, we need to come up with a purpose statement, a mission statement for it.
Details, come on. Right now, so we need to do that later.
We can do it later. If, if, we can do it in two weeks, and in the meantime, we can start putting together whatever the process is going to look like.
Okay, so we can't officially establish an ad hoc committee until we have that statement?
You can, but we, that's the process has been, we've had one. If you want to just strike a, a committee to, to review the ARPA, to, to review and recommend ARPA projects, you could do that. I heard four names, so I don't know which name I need to cross off here.
Mrs. McKay, Ms. Ms. Ellsworth and Mr. Shipley.
Okay. I just, I just crafted the motion for you.
Okay, so does anybody want to make that motion? Okay, let's repeat the motion.
To, to review and recommend ARPA projects to just, to review and recommend projects to be done under, with ARPA's funds. For recommendations to the entire council.
Okay, let's repeat it one more time for Elizabeth, so she got it clear. Mr. Fillmore, go ahead and re- repeat that.
Who do we establish an ad hoc committee comprised of council members, Ellsworth, McKay and Shipley to liaison with the city administration to review and recommend projects that would benefit most from the ARPA funding.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion of the motion? Our, oh, go ahead.
Who's chairing the committee? Mr. Shipley.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion for Mr. Shipley to chair the committee under that state purpose statement that was just articulated. I'll second that motion. And do we have a discussion of that motion? Okay, we'll go ahead and take a vote. All in favor? And it's unanimous in the chamber and online. Ms. Ellsworth?
Yes.
And Mr. Hanley?
Yes.
Unanimous. Thank you all.
There you go, Mr. Parker. We're two weeks ahead.
There we go. Even better.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Parker.
You're welcome. I'm up next, so I'm just.
Oh, you're up next.
Just gonna stand if that's.
Okay, a presentation regarding my hometown initiative presented by Mayor Kafusi and and Wayne, Mr. Parker.
Hey, I want to introduce a new and exciting opportunity for Provo called the My Hometown Initiative. Let me give you a little bit of a backstory. About a year ago, I got a phone call from someone pretty high up in the church asking if I was ready to receive, I believe we stated, Mayor, are you worthy or something funny, like ready to receive some blessings? And I said, I may not be, but the city of Provo is, and he said, well, great, because that's who it's going to impact. And that was kind of the introduction to this initiative that the church has come out with. What they've done is they did a pilot program in West Valley, and we went up to West Valley and met with them and saw what they were doing. And I'm going to turn the time over to Wayne, but basically what their initiative is, is the program is the effort to build community leadership, provide needed resources and help the residents in these neighborhoods create and retain the tools they need to increase longevity and to create lasting connections in Provo. So I'll turn it over to Wayne, and he'll walk you through some of the process we've gone through up to this point. And it's been a process. The church puts you to work, just so you know.
Thank you, Mayor. This this would not have happened up to this point without a significant team effort, and, and the mayor has been the most significant player in trying to get us to this point. So let me just walk through the, the, the concept of my hometown and, and kind of where we're heading with that. So there we go. So the My Hometown Initiative, as the mayor indicated, was the result of a, of a pilot project that was done with the, actually at the initiative of the city of West Valley and attempting to partner with the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints and their local residents. And we are benefiting from their eighteen months of experience with this initiative and, and putting our own Provo twist on to, on to how we think it will best work. So as the mayor indicated, to, to shortcut all of the purposes, we've kind of come down to this idea of building community leadership and resilience as being the, the key objective. So this involves collecting and deploying a wide variety of resources in, in a community to address community needs. So these resources might include labor, might include expertise, might include mentoring, might include financial resources as well to try to make a difference in a, in a neighborhood. So the purpose really is, the mayor's indicated, is to bring new life and energy to city neighborhoods by improving housing and the appearance of the neighborhood, to offer opportunities for the community's families to advance and prosper, and to make the community a place where people will want to invest their time, money and efforts. So, so basically, to give just a thumbnail of kind of how it works, is the city provides what we would characterize as leadership and connections. We marshal the resources of local ecclesiastical leaders, whether they're from the predominant faith or from other faiths, but to, to engage the faith community. Block captains are recruited from residents in the neighborhood, attempt to identify some of the natural leaders and have them essentially provide the connection and the boots on the ground leadership. The Church of Jesus Christ would then provide missionary and facility resources, and we'll talk about that in a minute. And then we work with the local nonprofits to maximize their resources and in some ways maximize their reach. Probably not changing much about what they do, but changing how their resources are accessed in the broader community. So we talked about block captains, so this has been sort of the secret sauce in the West Valley pilot was block captains that are kind of identified as the natural leaders in a community and would work with somewhere around twenty to thirty-five families, although there are a couple of block captains in West Valley that work with a significantly larger number than that. They determine needs and then marshal the resources. So it's kind of the thing of coming into a neighborhood and saying, boy, you have a lot going for you here. You know, there are, there are a lot of great people and a lot of great resources. You have wonderful youth. Tell us what's lacking, you know, what, what, what could this initiative bring to the table to assist this neighborhood to kind of move to the next level? And then we, again, focus first on the families in the neighborhoods. So this is not the kind of thing which we see so often. You know, we'll often have a young adult group that will come in and say, we want to come into a neighborhood and we want to clean it up. And so they'll come in and they'll take all the weeds out of parking strips and, and they'll, you know, they'll polish the neighborhood, and then everybody will say thank you, and they'll all go home, and the neighborhood is left with exactly the same resilience that they had before. The problems haven't been solved, only the appearances changed. And, and this is really to get around that model and to say, we're going to find ways to empower the neighborhood to do what they feel like they need to accomplish their aims. So the church volunteers, which is, which is a lot of what the Church of Jesus Christ brings to this effort is to, is to offer church service missionaries in large numbers. In the West Valley City Experience, they had over two hundred church service, full-time church service missionaries. These are folks who are typically retired or at a point in their career where they could take some time off and really commit their resources. Some of that involves organizing Saturday fix-up, clean-up, paint-up kinds of experiences where they remove dead trees, they fix landscaping, they might paint a home that needs painting, they might haul off, you know, a backyard full of junk that, that improves, again, the physical appearance and livability of the neighborhood. Some of that will be experts in that group who will come in and, you know, a retired human resources director that could come in and say, let me help you figure out how to advance your career. You're underemployed today, let's get you fully employed. And work individually with, with individuals, families, others to solve that problem. It could be somebody who comes in and says, boy, you know, you could sure benefit from a sprinkler system in this area, so you could get around, you know, flood irrigation or having to water by hand. Let's bring in the experts who know how to do that, and let's go get some donations, and let's find some funding, and let's get materials, and then we'll come in and do a, someone will design it professionally, and then we'll do a Saturday morning and get your sprinkler system installed. You know, it, it ranges around all of those kinds of things, so it isn't just labor, it isn't just experience, but it's, it's all of those things combined. So the, the, the church asked if we could look for opportunities where we could match up neighborhoods with ecclesiastical units. From their standpoint, it just made a lot more sense to have a stake president instead of six stake presidents involved. And so after a, a long effort trying to evaluate which neighborhoods could, could use this the best, that had a good framework of existing community leaders, maybe former neighborhood chairs or, or those, you know, those kinds of resources available and willing and interested ecclesiastical leaders, we settled on doing a program with the Provo Freedom Stake and the Provo South Stake, which generally comprises some of the Central Business District area, but also generally Franklin, Franklin South, and a good share of Mazer and a little bit of Joaquin. South Joaquin and and bring those those neighborhoods into this equation. Generally, the church volunteers focus again on service projects, one-on-one mentoring, and what they've done in West Valley, which again is has had great promise because of the pandemic. It's been a little hard to pull off until recently. But but the church has essentially donated a church building in the neighborhood where for six days a week, that church building is under the control of the My Hometown Initiative. And so a multipurpose room becomes a computer lab. Classrooms become, you know, places for financial literacy or resiliency training. You know, the cultural hall is used for ethnic and community celebrations, where they have a youth council, which has become a really important integral part of what's happened in West Valley. And that youth council has meetings, they have activities, they do service projects, and they are all headquartered at the Community Resource Center. And on Sunday morning, or Saturday night, everything moves out. So you have ecclesiastical services on Sunday, and Monday morning, everything gets moved back in, and for six days, it's a resource center. And and so those kinds of that kind, those kinds of resources are pretty unique to this to this initiative. And then the church service missionaries would also coordinate efforts with the city nonprofits, the church ecclesiastical leadership. They become sort of the the liaison to look for resources. So the city's involvement, we have designated two city liaisons. So Dixon Holmes will take one of those two stakes, and Tara Riddle will take the other. They will be the the key liaisons between the working groups and and coordinate the city's response. So among the things we would do is look at opportunities for grant funds. We might find some CDBG money or or other things to do. In-kind services like bringing a roll-off in on a Saturday morning, so and so a neighborhood service project could, you know, take down a a dead tree in the front yard and and cut it up for wood, and what didn't get cut up could be thrown in the dumpster, and we'd remove it. Might be coming in and doing street cleaning after an event like that. We have a lot of sawdust in the road. We bring a street cleaner in and so on. Occasional unlimited but-for funding. So one good example we saw in West Valley was an elderly resident widowed person who who desperately needed her roof replaced. And so the the church service missionaries, among them was a professional roofer who is retired. He came in, the estimating, went to his sources, got donation of of roofing materials. And and even after all the donations, they came up a few hundred dollars short. And so they, the volunteers came to the city and said, can you find us a few hundred dollars to finish this project? And West Valley City said, yeah, absolutely, we can figure out that, figure that out. And so occasionally, the city was asked to go into that. It was in the hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollar range across eighteen months of effort, so not a huge expense, but ended up being something that really made a big difference. Again, provide workers' compensation insurance for the volunteers because they are city volunteers. The church recruits them. But they are, and they they are called as missionaries, but they are our volunteers. And so we provide, do background checks for them like we would for any other long-term volunteer for us, and then we provide name tags and paper and, you know, print a newsletter and some of those kinds of things that would need to come out of the city's budget. So West Valley results, I've just included a couple of quotes here. I talked about the youth council and other faith-based institutions. So our good friend Nicole Cottle, whom I've known for twenty-five years in city management, the assistant city manager in West Valley, said, we brought the spark, and that's it. The residents have been the fuel all along. And that's kind of how we see our role as the spark in this effort. One of the block captains said, my hometown really helped our neighborhood get to know each other well. Let me just highlight, one of the things we have learned with all the research on neighborhood engagement is that the most successful neighborhoods are places where neighbors know and take care of each other. Everything else follows that effort. When you don't know your neighbors and you don't have their back, things don't happen. We had a circumstance in our neighborhood just recently, and I shared this with the mayor, where we had a young a young man who grew up in our neighborhood, was a very good friend of my youngest son, went to high school together and hung out together, got in a mischief together. Four years ago, he married, and his wife is expecting a baby, and suddenly he contracted COVID perfectly healthy, doing very well, and two weeks later, he died in the intensive care unit at Utah Valley Hospital. This neighborhood absolutely rallied, whether they were church members or not church members. Everybody stepped in and did something to support this family during funeral and after the funeral and, you know, from from mowing the grass and raking the leaves, so it would be presentable for guests to visit, to bringing chairs and so on. Neighborhoods like that have resiliency. Neighborhoods who don't know each other might never even know that Marcus passed away. And and accordingly, there's just so much of that neighborhood capacity building needs to be done. So get to know each other, especially in our cul-de-sac, cool way to look out for each other's backs and for me to be able to just get to know my neighbors. One story in West Valley where there was a dead tree removed from the front yard, the the volunteers got over on Saturday morning and said, we got some cars out here on the street that we got to move because we don't know exactly where this tree's going to fall. You know, could you go talk to your neighbors and get them to move their cars? And he said, the property owner said, I don't know any of my neighbors. And they said, well, no time like the present. Go knock on doors. And you know what happened? Not only did they move their cars, but they came out with chainsaws and with handsaws and with rakes and and so on, and they became active volunteers in removing the dead tree from the neighbor's front yard. That's that's the beauty of the of the program and what it actually accomplishes. So a couple of closing thoughts. We're seriously enthusiastic about what this initiative might bring to bear. It is really all about capacity building. What we'd like to do is not just the one-and-done, as I indicated before, but to bring in resources that help to teach and build capacity in the neighborhood. So when the initiative, the missionaries and the city move on and maybe go as West Valley's done, they started with one neighborhood. They just commissioned four more this year. As as that intensity of effort moves on, that neighborhood is left with not just where they were before, but they're left with capacity now to solve their own problems and know where to find resources that are needed. And then again, developing resiliency is the objective. It's not just about sort of cleanup and paint-up. So so that's basically kind of my hometown. We'd love to have an opportunity to come back in the next couple, three meetings and bring some folks from the from the volunteer effort and and let you meet them and kind of get a sense for their enthusiasm. We've had a lot of interaction with with twelve or eight missionary couples that have been called by the church to lead the effort. Several of those names you would recognize because they probably live in your neighborhoods and are really extraordinary people, including a retired upper-level BYU administrator who's been at the vice president level and finding his way, and he and his wife into adopting one of these stakes and taking the lead and and retired contractor, general contractor, who again brings some of that expertise and a ton of enthusiasm. So we're super excited about this, and knowing that the church was recruiting these missionaries currently, we wanted to at least come in and let you know this was underway. We are working on a on a contractual arrangement with the church. We're exchanging drafts of an agreement that will define the city's administrative role in the in the project, and so that's underway and probably will be done within the next couple, three weeks. But again, super excited about the project. Happy to answer any questions you have, and I can even send you a link if you want to volunteer.
Mr. Parker, this is nothing short of fantastic.
We think so, too.
This has such huge potential for our city. And I'm assuming that we start with these two pilots, and if they're successful, we'd expand it.
I think I think if we're nearly as successful as we think, if we're half as successful as we hope to be, it will be very easy to to move this to another location.
Yeah, I I suspect that there there may be some critics out there who would say this is unacceptable church and state collaboration kind of a thing, but I don't see that at all. This is not ecclesiastical involvement in the city. It's not proselytizing. It's simply a charity providing resources and doing what great charities should do.
In fact, I should mention, the missionaries don't wear missionary name tags. They, we we provide them a lanyard with a little name card on it. It is, there is no proselytizing. That's that's defined in our agreement. And they don't come wearing, you know, Sunday clothes. They come in blue jeans and work boots, and that's that's exactly how we want them to be.
Well, I'm I am excited about this, what it can do. This is fantastic.
It's great to take advantage of an organization that has the ability to mobilize many volunteers very quickly. We know that that's the case, and that's the real beauty of it. It's 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 marshaling those resources in a way that that really benefit the community and that are driven largely by the 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 block captains and the internal organization of the of the neighborhood that really drives this.
Ms. Ellsworth?
I had a question and then a small comment. My question is, and maybe we'll learn this along the way in the next few weeks, but what can the council do to make this successful?
Well, I, there's a couple of things. I think you could, you could, well, you could certainly use your influence and your bully pullets to go out and help us recruit some folks to participate. You know, I don't know how many in the twenty-eight stakes, the church stakes that are in our coordinating council will be will be interested in in really heavily recruiting. I know there's efforts underway in a couple of the stakes that that I've chatted with. The other thing would be to help us identify maybe some funding sources for some of this but-for opportunity. And again, a large measure, we can probably handle the early stages of this within existing budget, but we may be coming to you at budget time looking for some some allocation of funds that could be could be put to this to, again, help with some of that minor but-for expenditure.
We'd be setting up special. I'm sorry, Shannon, can I just intervene quickly? Would we be setting up a special city fund?
Yes.
To accumulate those things?
That would be our intent.
Okay, thanks. I'm sorry, Shannon.
Oh, that's okay. My my comment or question is, I know this guy who I think would be a terrific fit. His name is Dave Harding. Do you want me to reach out to him and see if he's interested?
Absolutely. I'll be glad to send you a link.
Maybe you have his number.
I can do that, too. I have his email to, yeah, this, yeah, I mean, again, anyone who's community-minded would bring a tremendous amount to the table. I should mention, too, one of the things the the ecclesiastical leaders are very interested in is engaging the young single adult and stakes and the and the the young adult state, single adult stakes and wards. This is a very heavily untapped resource in our community that often doesn't get involved in projects like this, and they're working very diligently with the single adult ecclesiastical leadership to get them engaged, and that's part of our secret sauce that West Valley didn't have, was a very large base of of folks to participate.
Another question, right? Shannon, I don't mean to cut you off. You finished. I just wanted to ask Wayne to define the geographical areas we're talking about a little more precisely.
Yeah, I probably should have brought a map. So so generally speaking, it is bounded by, let's see, I-15 on the west would go down about as far as about ninth south or thereabouts, cuts across, kind of makes a little wrap around the frontrunner station, so comes down about where the frontrunner station is, makes a jog to the north about six south, goes out to about seventh west, and then up to just north of Center Street, about second or third north, and then makes a jog back, connects to Center Street, and then goes straight out to I-15. So if you can just envision that a general map, it's close, within a few blocks here or there.
That's the Provo Freedom Stake.
Provo Freedom and Provo South Stakes.
Oh.
Two different stakes.
That's combined.
Yes, combined.
Okay, let's have Ms. Ms. Ellsworth finish her questions or comments.
Thank you. I was just going to respond to Mr. Parker's comment. I think that you're right. There is a tremendous resource in Provo that is students that are people who are young and single and able-bodied and willing and ready to help. I think they have been a tremendous resource already in our community. They initiate by themselves many service projects, like cleaning up Slate Canyon and donating thousands of dollars to United Way. Those are just two that come to mind, but let's do our part to include everyone, every every corner of our community in this in this endeavor.
Yep, hundred percent with you. We've seen remarkable contributions by this group. It would be, and again, if you think, we took some of the missionary couples to the South Franklin Community Center a couple of weeks ago and walked through their programming, and one of the things that they commented on was the the vast number of volunteer hours that are given there, that are given predominantly by young singles. You know, that mentor, teach piano lessons, teach violin lessons, that manage playdates, that are just, they're they're an incredible resource in so many ways, and this would just amplify that in our community.
Ms. Whipple?
Yeah, so I'd like to know how this program coordinates with things like United Way, with Circles, with Centro Hispano. Is it formally set up to work with those groups?
Yes, yeah. So again, the the intent is not to duplicate programs. And in fact, as we we invited United Way and and Community Action, sorry, yeah, to join us at the South Franklin Community Center, and one of the things they talked about was how limited their space is there, and 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 again, their target is predominantly right in the heart of the South Franklin neighborhood. Their reach isn't as broad as they would like, and so the ideas of taking a community resource center that might be located in in Mazor or or Joaquin and say, let's, as part of that community resource center, let's take our volunteers, and let's take the programming, circles or otherwise, that's done at South Franklin and and multiply that into other facilities. Their 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 limitation is often just the geography. And this would overcome that. So, yeah, there's a clear interest in work at trying to trying to magnify the existing nonprofit efforts.
I will say that I live in the boundaries of the Provo Freedom Stake. This is my neighborhood and my area. So I'm curious about the use of the church-owned buildings and properties, how they've managed to work that out with facility management and with risk management for the liability issues and things like that.
That was a big part of the pilot project that was done in West Valley. It was a pretty heavy lift to get that done, but but thus far, it's been, it's been working very successfully. Probably doesn't hurt that the folks who run that resource center in West Valley are the Wixoms, so Rosemary Wixom, who'd been the primary general president, and her husband, who was one of the founders of Jacobson Construction. They have a very long history of involvement with the church, and I think that probably helped get some of that heavy lifting done. But, yeah, the system's in place now, and there are specific guidelines allowing this in pilot projects like this one.
Right, because in addition to the use of the space inside the buildings to actually have this be a good community space, it would be really helpful if we had more things like outdoor pavilions or place structures
Yep.
or even dog poop bag stations, you know, our our church building in in my neighborhood is being used as an unofficial dog park, and it's kind of terrible.
Right. Yeah, let me, let me certainly forward that on. I think that's a great suggestion. Actually, the the volunteers are looking for some opportunities to create some outdoor space as a service project. So I don't know if they'd get to the level of building a pavilion, but they could certainly certainly do a lot. And and we'd love to task them with kind of working with the church on that. I think that'd be a great idea. In in West Valley, the parking lot's actually been used for luos and and the the local, the local mosque actually kind of came over and did a did a program in the parking lot where they're served food and talked about their faith tradition, and 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 so there's been, the the church has been super open to letting things happen on their property that and having having been in ecclesiastical roles before, I know how hard that is to get over the hump, and they have they have gotten there.
That's fantastic, because a lot of times those those church properties end up being dead spaces in the community.
Yes, yeah.
Would there also be work with groups like AA or those other community groups?
Yeah, I think certainly could be. And again, the 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 uses and programs associated with this Community Resource Center will largely be defined by the needs assessment done by the by the the block captains. And so I think the intent is to try to find some commonalities. Are there, you know, would would some kind of AA or or Al-Anon or some kind of program like that be helpful? You know, and again, I think it goes, you know, it kind of goes all over the map. You know, as we talked to a couple of the stake presidents in the area, one of their concerns has been particularly at the Title I schools, and I think Terry could maybe respond to this if you wanted at some point or talk about it, but we found in the during the pandemic, when kids went home to learn in the areas where we had Title I schools, the challenge was that most kids never showed up for online school, or if they did, it was maybe one day a week. And so they got really far behind and. And so they got really far behind, and as the as the local ecclesiastical leaders tried to jump on this question, the answer was that a lot of homes, they may have broadband, but they don't have a device that will that will do homeschool and or homes, home remote school. And so as we talked about that, the United Way said, well, we have a program here at the South Franklin Community Center where if you come take our computer literacy class and you attend eighty percent of the classes and you graduate, we give you a refurbished desktop computer and you can take it home. We'll help you set it up. We'll teach you and your kids how to use it. And we thought, man, if we could just amplify that project, particularly in this neighborhood, and maybe some of our church volunteers are folks who wipe and upgrade older desktop computer models and equip them with Linux and hand them you know, to a to a needing family who needs that resource. Maybe that would be the very best use of time with some of those church service missionaries.
So we're out of time.
Sorry, I knew this one would take a little bit longer.
But Mr. Hanley's been raising his hand, so I want to give him sixty seconds if he'd like to make a comment or ask a question. And then Mrs. McKay as well. So then those will be the last two two questions or comments we have. Go ahead, George.
Thanks, I can be brief. I I think much of it has been covered, but I'm just thrilled that these buildings will be utilized when they're so often just empty and sitting there with very large parking lots in Provo, which for many of the neighborhoods are totally unnecessary. So I do hope that it's contemplated that not only will the buildings be used, but the parking lots may be reimagined entirely, and that maybe people would start walking to church a little more often. But I also just want to put in a plug that our school board member McKay Jensen in another role is Bishop Jensen of the Mid Singles Ward in Provo, which is an enormous resource in my neighborhood that should be consulted. So thanks so much. This is great news.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to reiterate that I'm very excited about this project. I remember talking to Bill Halterstrom, who runs United Way, and we talked about neighborhoods because that is important to me, and he mentioned how like, it's a long term effects of this, too, right? Will lower crime. We will increase the sustainability of those wards, I mean, of these neighborhoods. And I think the long term effects are even what excites me more.
Yep, I think the the research clearly shows that that people don't tag the homes of neighbors they know and like. That's just not where it happens. And so again, that that's just a good a good outcome of a project like this, just to get people to know each other and work together. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. I will concede we are officially behind schedule. But we're going to get some of that back. You have a eight minute break. I'll see everyone at two thirty five. Sorry, I'm killing some good conversation, I can tell. Chill the room here. Yeah. Put my winter coat on, I'm too cold. All right, so our next item of council business will be a presentation reviewing the Provo City General Plan, Part Two of Three. This will be presented by I guess Brandon and Melissa Planners.
Brandon and Melissa.
All right, Brandon Larson, Melissa McNally. And this is a discussion. And I'm sure it will be one.
Yes, sir. So you've you've most recently heard from Hannah that she's a little under the weather at the moment, so we're we're fill-ins for today, so. So you've gone through chapters one through four last time, and we'll we'll go through five through eight with you today. Five through seven, that's right. The eighth is the implementation. That's Melissa's here to keep me on track. First, a couple of points to to touch on before we get too far. So the we've received some feedback from from the administration, and they would like a statistically valid survey done to elicit feedback from the community. We've, I think we've talked to you guys quite a bit about the some of the things that we've gone through, that we feel like we've gone through quite a bit to to kind of get this out in the public's eye and to get their feedback. One thing that we haven't done and that I think is a is a good thing, and that's to get a statistically valid survey. That's going to help get get you know, get a get some science involved in in the the feedback that we get, kind of level out you know, any any in any unfairness that may have occurred, and I don't know that any unfairness occurred, but just saying that it's going to be a statistically valid survey and and we we think that's a good thing. So so right now, we're in the process of we're going to be working on hiring a consultant. We've been given a couple of names of people who have worked with the city before on projects like the Trail Trails Master Plan and the Rec Center. We've been given some good good leads from some other department heads, so we appreciate that. And then we'll, once we've got a consultant on board, then we'll we'll start drafting questions and we'll be working with with the city and and no councils interested in in we've received feedback from from the council. They'd like to be involved in in that process, so we'll be working on questions and getting that out to the public here shortly, so. Before we get into Chapter Five, Lee, I don't know if you've got a document that's entitled revisions to general plan from work meeting discussions, yes. So this is just kind of, a after we came to you guys a couple, a couple of weeks ago, after the camp, after we came to the council, we went through and tried to address these address comments made and and so this is a a brief sheet that shows some of those changes that we made. Made no change to the to the vision statement. We tried to clean up the clerical issue in that second bullet point. Or, yeah, just to kind of clean up the language a little bit. One, one major thing in the third bullet point, we we heard a lot about economic development and the goals, and so we went in and and in the, you you may remember this sheet, we talked about that quite a bit. Page eleven and twelve, I keep referring it back to it myself as I review the general plan, but we went in to livable Provo goal number three and updated that to to add in a reference to economic development and then also added an economic development reference to goal four of a city that leads. So we're trying to be more, you know, trying to make sure that economic developments that in these goals and and make sure that everybody knows that that's a really important consideration in our general plan. So number four, the fourth bullet point there, livable Provo, tried to clean that up a little bit, strive to increase the number of housing units of all types. All types across Provo in an appropriate and balanced way. So took out the the word whole, so, you know, maybe maybe the whole of Provo is isn't the right language that that the council wants there, so we I think that's a gives us a little more wiggle room and and kind of placing that, giving us a policy that might help us as as we try to determine where housing should go in the city. Fair and equal distribution of services. Took out the word equal there, the kind of that third, second sub bullet point, fair and balanced distribution of services. And then the bottom there, vulnerable and underserved populations. Just wanted to hit home that it's not just college students who have who are, you know, in a among those who are vulnerable. It's people who, you know, might be vulnerable due to age or income status or medical conditions. And and we we heard from Counselor Ellsworth about, you know, it's not just the you know, the west that that might be under rep, might be an underrepresented population. The southeast is another underrepresented population that she she referenced, so we added that. Down to public safety, we tried to add a couple of points there to to just underscore the the importance of public safety in our community there with welcoming community goal number one, A, expand access. We added public safety services, so we, that's an important policy that that we as a welcoming community, we want to make sure that public safety services are are available to all. Welcoming community goal number two, expansion of public facilities and services, again, trying to make sure that public facilities and services are available to our citizens. So that's that, those are the updates that we wanted to to point out, and then at least the language, and then could you go to the the map? Yeah, and so we went through and and highlighted or went through again and looked at this plan to make sure that we we hadn't hadn't missed any, missed the boat on on anything here. So we, on this first page, you can you can see some of the areas that we we identified as as a possible concern. Up there, starting on the north end, up in the northeast part of the city, that mixed use bubble seemed to kind of go, we felt a little too far to the east, and so we had that cut off at Canyon Road. So it wouldn't go east of Canyon Road. We realized that we failed, and I've got a pointer here, so I'll use it. Mixed use right there, we failed to create a mixed use land use designation for the day's market area, so you can see that now. One of the things that we highlight on on this document is gateways. We realized we didn't have a gateway for State Street on the Oran-Provo border, so we added that. Trimmed off a little bit of mixed use area in the just east, yeah, by by Grand View. Or that that spot actually, maybe wrong, but isn't that kind of by Molly's and the DI, kind of east of Columbia or west of Columbia Lane, I believe. Right there, kind of spilled into that to those neighborhoods, and we we felt that wasn't appropriate. Going down airport should have extended a little farther to the to the west there. We, rather than parks, it should be airport in this in this area according to where we did that change because it lined up better with the south southwest future land use map. Right here, pretty simple. This, we don't want let me say it a different way. The general plan that we currently have says that the city doesn't want land development on the south side of Lakeview Parkway, so we trimmed that out, trimmed off that mixed use area. And then kind of cleaned up a few things in here that we had a mixed use area that was spilling into a neighborhood by I fifteen and kind of above Lakeview Parkway where we recently had that FC three rezone that new commercial area kind of by I fifteen. We we took out some of that mixed use area to to kind of preserve that the neighborhood, the single family neighborhood there. And then kind of cleaned up the page around the Norda Medical College. It was all residential, and there was only that that area right here, can't see it really well, but all of that was residential. And only the middle of it should have been residential, and the rest of it was used shape, so we we changed it to physical facilities. So that's a lot of other you know, schools and other things. That's the jur, the land use designation that we had used. Oh, Powerline Park, we changed, changed that to a park status right there. The city owns there's a subdivision there that never got built in the city. Has looked at that as potential park. Another spot right here, just kind of by the, well, right there. That's residential currently on that map, and that's not supposed to be residential. This is like right behind Sam's Club. So I don't think, we didn't think it was advisable to have a residential area between Sam's Club and and some of the industrial uses in the over in the the East Bay area. Same thing right here, just by the golf course, there was another little piece of industrial right there. This is residential on the current map, and we're like, that that definitely shouldn't have been there. So this the Mountain Vista area has been changed to industrial as it probably should be, so. So those are the changes that we made to the land use map, just trying to make sure we've got this cleaned up and and right for the the public.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, yeah, please.
So my understanding was that this map was just kind of very broad strokes.
Yeah.
It wasn't supposed to be, you know, a granular kind of map, which is part of the reason I didn't object to my house being listed as a commercial area. Right?
Yeah.
Because if you look at, you know, the third three hundred south area between university and seven hundred.
Okay.
You've got that hash marked as commercial, even though it's residential and commercial, so it should be mixed use, maybe. I don't know. It's an RC zone.
Right, again, seven hundred.
Three hundred south from university to seven hundred east.
Seven hundred east.
So it's a little stripy bit. Go down, down, down. There you go.
Right there. Okay, okay, gotcha.
But and you've got that commercial going all the way down to four hundred south, which is entirely residential, and I figured this is just a really broad Sharpie marker kind of thing instead of granular thing. So how specific do people need to look at this? Like, are the expectations that this is general broad strokes clearly laid out so that we don't have people freaking out over what seems to be an inappropriate designation, just because it wouldn't make sense to do it that granular on a map of this size?
Yeah, and I see your point. We we kind of went back and forth on that question as staff. These were just a few spots that we thought were were clearly not not appropriate. This spot particularly, we got some feedback from the neighborhood. They didn't like it, so we're like, we'll we'll get it off of there. We we knew we had a policy against that, and and you're right, it is broad broad strokes, and so on one hand, I wasn't overly concerned about it, but I thought these could make, could help prevent some concerns in the future, so that's why we addressed them. This this is just what we're proposing to you. If you you feel like that's getting too granular, we can certainly put it, you know, not do some of these changes. I think a few of them are pretty warranted, but yeah, that's.
I think the changes are good.
Can I add some feedback on this map specifically?
Yep.
Yeah, I I shared Ms. Whipple's question too about Third South being commercial. I use that street all the time, and it feels more residential to me.
Yeah.
So if that's the direction that staff and consultants think is right, I'd be interested in some some more justification for that. And then I I have a question about South State Street, as I often do. Mixed use seems like it's not really mixed use. It seems like we're putting multi-family in town homes in those spots, and sometimes we integrate commercial, and sometimes we just build multi-family around older commercial, but it doesn't seem like true mixed use in in kind of the classic sense. I think that mixed use in the classic planning sense works when it's very walkable and works where it's in a kind of a downtown center. But this is not a walkable space. South State Street is not a walkable space. I I just don't see, I don't see the vision that maybe other people see on on having that being mixed use. I mean, if it's supposed to be residential, if people think it should be residential or high density or medium density. if it's supposed to be residential, if people think it should be residential or high density or medium density, then put that, but to call it mixed use isn't, I don't think that that meets the criteria in a classic planning sense.
I see.
And I don't know that it should be residential. I'm not advocating for that. I, I actually think it's kind of a miserable place to put residential between the state highway and railroad tracks. But I, I think there needs to be some more thought into that.
And we can, we can look at that. I don't know, Melissa, if you had any.
No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry to interrupt the conversation here. We've already gone over these maps and taken suggestions from all of you during the last council meeting. And we're happy to continue those conversations. If you want to email us changes, Ms. Ellsworth, if you want to, Brandon's taking note here on that suggestion, we can talk about that later. But really today, and because this is a really meaty, meaty section of the general plan, we really need to focus on chapters five, six, and seven. So if we could, you know, we just, we just wanted to illustrate some of the changes that we've taken into consideration to submit to the consultants and you all have them in your packets. So.
Hey, that's a, that's a good point of clarification to get us kind of back on track so we can use our time. What we're here for. Yeah, please do. Just forward me any suggestions. We're, we're still working on this document.
Um, Brandon, so it's like lit, lit up like Christmas lights over here. So I think you, you were just trying to show us some of the changes that have been made, but you were hoping that today's discussion wouldn't really focus on this particular map, right?
Yeah.
And considering we have 33 minutes left to cover the remainder, I guess I would just ask, let's move on from the map for now.
Yeah.
And then we can always email you is, is
Yeah, please do.
Melissa saying, and let's try to cover at least some of the content. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna say, no more questions or comments about the map, but go ahead, Ms. McKay.
We've been emailing Hannah. Should we also be emailing you? You're welcome. Sorry. You're welcome to email us both, but Hannah shares all the emails with us. So we're all seeing the comments that you're submitting.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Hanley, question?
Yeah, thank you. I, I, I wanted to maybe make a comment about section, the city that leads section. I really like the, I can't remember, goal number four on page 64. Encourage diversification of tax base and revenue streams through efficiency and proactive governance. I suspect that that's probably the most pressing problem Provo has actually in terms of its economic wellbeing and, you know, just trying to solve the problem of diversifying our tax base. When we have so many nonprofit properties in the city and so on, that's just been a perennial issue in Provo. And, and I guess I'm just asking for maybe more substance behind that goal. I don't know what, I, I don't pretend to have the expertise, but it feels a little light on suggestions for how to get some traction on that because that feels to me like, again, one of the number one challenges we face economically in Provo and, and it would be wonderful to, to get some more meat behind that goal. But otherwise I, you know, I quite like, I quite like the whole section. And feel like it's, it's strong. I just felt like that could be a little stronger.
I think that's a, a great comment. I think as we prepared for this meeting, that was one thing that we keyed on, get in on to that, that's a really important issue and beefing that up, I, I think is, is a great thing. So we can, we can certainly look at that. And, and yeah, look at that and, and come back with something a little more beefed up. If that's, I guess the other thing too is, as far as changes. Brian, I think last time you mentioned that if there was going to be a, the council should make motions. Can you remind me of what you said last time?
Well, there's a lot of discretion here and I think it, to some degree, the recent discussion about the hold for the, the survey maybe makes this more complicated, but to know exactly what the right thing to do is my, my comment in the last meeting was just, I think it's awfully difficult for staff to handle individual comments from counselors without knowing how many counselors agree with that comment. And so I think I had suggested that one way to do that would be to have, to make motions. Another would be to make comments and look around and have everybody that agrees kind of give a nod or express agreement. And I also said, obviously, that any comment is, you know, at this point, the document is still in preparation by administrative staff. So if counselor makes an, an agreement that you actually go, oh, that's a great point. We want to do that even if nobody else agrees. And you can just go ahead and do it, right? But the extent that you start getting feedback from counselors and one is saying one thing and one is saying another thing. And, you know, my comment last time was to the counselors about, let's try to help staff figure out how to handle that. Okay.
And if I could just add, Mr. Hoben, that in light of what Mr. Jones was just saying, my, my comment is in the spirit of our previous conversations in part about balancing this document a little bit more strengthening its language about economic wellbeing in the, in the city. So I, I'm, I can't see everyone's head, so I can't tell if anyone's nodding or not. You all look very tiny from where I'm sitting. But if there's, if there's a general feeling that that's not a wildly inappropriate suggestion, that, that's, that's mine with regard to that particular issue.
Mr. Fillmore?
Yeah, George, I'll give you some feedback. I think that's a very important area to beef up. Glad to hear you say that. And I, I believe if I'm reading the tea leaves right, that Mr. Maury and our economic development people plan on doing just that and making those proposals. The other comment I wanted to make was I, as, as a general matter, Brandon, I, I'm, I'm comfortable with the changes that you folks are making and the process seems to be working. It's more of a response to Brian, I guess, with respect to motions on different language and whatever. We, we don't have anywhere near the time we would need to vote on every proposed edit, not even close. I think the point you're making is one that Cliff made in a memo just recently. It seems to me the better process would be for all members of the council to be at liberty to send in proposed edits and comments to Claringhouse, which I suspect is represented by Brandon and Melissa and Handon. And let them sort through them at the, on the front end. My guess is they'll fall into three categories. First category will be no brainers. You know, everyone's saying, oh, of course, yeah, we've missed that, or this is misspelled, or the grammar is wrong, or whatever. And second category will be those that, you know, where you kind of gotta think it through. But as a general matter, I'm guessing that Brandon's group are going to feel comfortable making some of those. Third group would be those where they, they just don't feel comfortable going all the way and making a proposed edit without counsel comment and, and a vote perhaps. But I, I, I want to try to limit that third category as much as we can so that we don't spend hours and months on, on every jot and tittle in the agreement.
I think that's actually a great idea. The thought that pops into my head as you say that though, is I think in order for that to truly be effective for the, for the staff, that may require a little bit of a change to how the discussion in, in the last couple of meetings has been happening where if you're really going to do that, then I'd almost suggest that you probably ought to save all of your comments and edits for that process and not for this meeting, meaning that in this meeting, staff prevent, presents, council asks clarifying questions about things they want to understand better, but don't make comments about things that like to see changed. And then they send all those comments through the email process that you just recommended.
You're reading my mind. I'm a hundred percent for that. We just don't have the time to have that kind of debate at this point on a granular level. For example, today, my, my intent is not to comment on part two. As we speak, my secretary is typing up my comments and they'll be in your hands tonight. But I, I think this is best to hear the presentation and ask for clarification, refinement as opposed to debating at this point.
Okay, so let's proceed that way then. Everybody agree on that? We're good. I think everybody, everybody is, is in agreement on that. We had a comment by Ms. Ellsworth. Ellsworth, please go ahead.
Yes. Give me one second. I'll find the page I was looking at. And this is not a highly specific comment. It's more of some feedback so that maybe staff wants to respond, or maybe they want to take some time to elaborate on this on page 52 under LP4. It says encourage growth around Provo Municipal Airport. And then it says follow the actions in the airport master plan and update as necessary. I bet the airport master plan, I apologize, I haven't read it, but I, I'm sure it's comprehensive and complete. I just wonder if that is a, a strong policy, encourage growth around the municipal airport. And it just doesn't seem complete. It seems incomplete. It seems like maybe there, it needs to be taken out or we need to add something substantial and material below A. That's just my high level feedback. It doesn't have to be fixed immediately. And I'm just encouraging staff to consider addressing that in a more complete way or taking it out.
I agree with your assessment. We'll, we'll evaluate that and bring something back to you. Bring back a recommendation, but I, I, you're spot on with that in my opinion. So we came today to to actually kind of try to go through, starting at, at chapter five and just try to go through pay, try to go, we only have 25, 23 minutes now. I just wanted to go page by page. And so if we could go back up to, to.
So in the, in the spirit of Mr. Jones' comments, let's, let's give you all a break and the chance to actually present the content and we'll save some questions for the end and maybe then provide feedback via email as well.
And, and we're, I, I think we're just here to try to, to get recommendations as we, you know, just recommendations as we go down. So page five here, any, any comments or feedback on, on page five, we've got Melissa's, he's kind of our modern income housing guru. So what's that now? Yep, page 41.
So if you have any, any questions or as, as Counselor Fillmore suggested, points of clarification, that's really what we're here for, to go through a page by page, because there's a lot to get through. So if there's, if there's nothing on, on this, on these two pages, we can move to the next.
I have a quick question. So in, what page is it? Page 43, the second paragraph or the first full paragraph on the right side column, it has the word leakage. Is that too technical of a term without, can these people? Yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry, which paragraph? Oh, right there. I mean, we could, we could change the word if you think that that is too technical, that people aren't going to understand.
We definitely want to make this a document that's conferenceable for everybody. So we can, we can definitely.
And then page 39. Would like your thoughts on population explosion, for, for lack of a better phrase. I think most of us saw an email a week or two back from David Wright, his math professor, BYU.
On page 39 or 49?
I'm sorry, not even close, 44.
Forty-four.
Yeah, I'm sorry. No wonder, no wonder you are confused. Okay. Professor Wright sent us an email which illustrates the fact that our growth rate has been shrinking over past decades. Whereas we're, we're keying off some figures, I believe from Mountainland, where they're projecting nearly 40,000 more people here. And I'm thinking in terms of our spatial limitations in Provo. One of the reasons housing costs are going up is because we don't have a whole lot of land to build new houses on, right? And so if you have, if you have a trend of decreasing growth and you have spatial limitations, do you feel that 38,800 number is justified? Because we're keying on, we're keying some of our recommendations off that number. And it seems way out of whack to me.
It could be. It's an, it's an estimate based on the explosion of Utah County. So the Mountainland Association of Governments gets their bases, their projections for each city in the county off of information from the Kem Gardner Institute. And they get their numbers from the census. So, so by, so by state law, we have to use the census data and we have to use credible published sources to cite in our documents. And sure, it could be a bit overinflated, but we are seeing a huge amount of growth, even though there's limited space in Provo. That's one of the things we're looking at is density because we've all got families that are growing and kids that are moving out and looking for places to live because they want to hopefully live by mom and dad. And, and I think those are the things that we're, they're looking on and basing their projections on. I can't say for sure. But, but that's why we're using those numbers.
Of course, we can't say for sure. They're just, just our best guesses, but I, I have no doubt that Utah County as a whole is exploding and going to get more and more populous. Just seemed to me that in Provo, the Professor Wright's data in our spatial limitations kind of undermine this projection. And I hate to rely on something I don't have confidence in.
Sure. If we had, if we had a published reliable resource that we could cite in the document, we could look at using that.
Did the Gardner Institute come up with this number?
It, it was by Mountainlands Association, working, work, because so.
Gardner Institute was focused on Utah County.
Yeah, they focus on the county and then MAG takes those numbers and projects for each municipality in the county based on the Kem Gardner's numbers.
Let's do a simple mathematical allocation based on population at each city.
I would suppose so.
So that, you know, that takes into account any nuances, does it?
I have, I couldn't say because I'm not doing the numbers there or the research. I don't want to speak for them.
I just wanted to explore that with you. Thank you, Melissa.
I think we could, what we can do in the meantime is take a look at these numbers and, and in the, in the light of David Wright's doc or email, we can take a look, closer look at him and try to give you some feedback and come back next time.
The other suggestion I would make in this, on the right hand side is page 44 again. Our numbers are really skewed, I mean, to a, to someone who doesn't understand Provo and they're just looking at these numbers, it looks really skewed, but the, the reason they're skewed is because of our student population.
Right.
And we don't say that. I mean, the, the, the reason we have such higher rental percentage and the reason we have relatively low median income is because of our high student population. We have to at least explain that here.
And I thought that, that it was, I can't point out for sure, but let me look into that because I thought that was addressed because we made that clear that that is, that is the reason for our lower median income.
I didn't, I'm sorry, that's my fault if I didn't pick that up. But I think it ought to be very bold and upfront.
I agree.
Explaining to our citizens.
Yeah.
I think most long-term citizens think we're a fairly prosperous city and that's a startling number.
Yeah. And we are. And then, and it's not, yeah, it's the student population. You look at our rental rates and that speaks for a lot towards our student population. Yeah.
Yeah, let's, we'll, we'll definitely look into that and, and address these when we, and, and follow up with you and get back with you.
Mr. Fillmore, I was just going to add that the Kemsey Gardner Policy Institute has multiple demographers. So if there's another demographer that wants to update or make, create nuance in this information, that would be helpful, but demographics is a specific field of study and I, I personally feel comfortable with these numbers.
Okay, thank you, Shannon.
I'm no expert, but I will say that I think the census was skewed because we had a lot of students gone. So that,
That's a fact.
That might have impacted those, those numbers. Anyways, any other comments here at the DICE? Miss Whipple?
I have a clarification question for the next slide down on 46. So at the top, it says, for example, a family of four living in Provo, the median income would need an average income. But then it lists the average income as the same amount for the median income that was on the previous page. I think having average and median income. I think having average and median income in the same sentence is very confusing.
Yeah, I see your point.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's, we'll get that fixed. Good, good catch.
All right, we got about fifteen minutes left, so we'll keep tracking along here. The only reason I'm trying to keep us on track, so. Be such a taskmaster is because we have two really important items to end the meeting, thirty minutes each, so, and they'll take thirty minutes for sure.
Anything on forty-five?
We've got a comment, but Mr. Handley.
Yes, um, this is a question about table five. Just how to read that exactly, I I'm really glad we have this information. Do we know where the typical student apartment lies on that? On that AMI percentage? I specifically, I'm wondering, because we have such a, we have a glut, it looks like, of apartments. Am I looking at the right thing? Oh, that's home price, where's the, I'm sorry, I maybe, maybe it's a further down, where's the one about apartments? Huh, I thought I.
Distribution of housing, is that what you were looking at?
No, I I can come back to it if, I thought there was an AMI one about rental apartments.
Go back up table three.
There it is. Yeah, we have this, anyway, I just wanted to make sure I was reading that correctly. That that, I I, and maybe this is just for, I'm really glad that's in there, maybe this is distracting to our purposes today, but I would like. Some clarification at some point on how to read that in terms of when we get proposals for housing units. Are we going to get them in that thirty to fifty percent? AMI range where we already seem to have more than we need, or are we going to get it in the thirty percent or below, where we really need it? Or in the eighty to one hundred and twenty, where we also really need it?
Great point, I like that. Yeah, let's look at that, but that's a, I hadn't thought about that before, that's, that's a good consideration. We can take a closer look at that and be prepared to, to to talk further about that next time we could get back with you.
So I'm sorry, Mr. Handley, is that a, is that a question on where, what the developers are bringing, or?
Yeah, I mean, I guess it's a, it's how would we use this going forward, you know, when we get proposals?
Okay.
It, uh, this seems like a really helpful thing to have in the general plan, although I assume this data is going to be constantly changing. So that may be a concern, but if this is sort of a, a data point that we're going to be able to reference when we're looking at proposals, it would be helpful. When we get proposals to have some idea as to where the proposed housing stock is going to fit within our current needs.
Okay, that's a great suggestion.
Yeah, maybe what's even in pipeline, you know, or the development pipeline, I don't know what we call it.
Yeah.
Mrs. McKay.
This interests me, and like George is saying, I think, this is more, I guess, not related to this, but I'm so happy that we're. Going to be doing a housing audit, because there's a huge difference to poverty level wise and median income wise between a student who may be driving a really nice car and have their dad's credit card in their pocket versus the single mom who has a couple of kids and is working two jobs. There's just such a difference, and we don't have that distinction, and having been both in my life, it's very different. So I really, that's why I think it does matter that we somewhat separate the student population, and it's not about not caring about them, not wanting to serve them, we do. But we need to understand our poverty group, because we're not understanding it, and it's just a dramatic difference, the student poverty versus other resident poverty.
Yeah. And that'll be, a housing audit will be a great tool for us, yeah.
Yeah, Miss Whipple.
So my question is related to that and table three, and it's how do we account for apartments where you're renting it out to six? Individual, single people, how do you count that as a household for their budget? How do you count the whole cost of renting that place? Because if they're each renting it for four hundred dollars a month, or six hundred dollars a month, it makes it seem like a very high-priced place, but. You know, I I just don't see how that fits in here, can you explain it?
The, okay. Okay, I'm sorry, say that again.
Well, so I think what she's saying is, you know, we have rental price ranges in here, and a, a home rented out to six students is going to have a very high rental price range.
Right.
Or cost, but then a similarly, and I think kind of along the lines of what Mrs. McKay is saying. A home that's rented to us, an individual who might be, you know, truly low income. Might have a lower price range, but also might have a lower income, I don't know, the, the student piece does definitely complicate things, I mean, it's definitely a complication, but.
Another thing is they don't have a common household budget, or a common household income between those six individual adults. Who are renting it, so I don't know how you calculate the household income for that type of a unit.
And this is all, all of these tables are comprised from census data, so it's just, that's what we have to rely on. That's what we have to work with, and that's why an individual housing audit for Provo would would be amazing.
Right.
Um, it would be amazing if we had our own version of the Kem Gardner Institute, I would love that, it would make things so much nicer.
We've only got eight minutes, and we've still got a.
I'd like to make a motion, we commission Larson McNally Institute for housing audits. Just kidding, Elizabeth.
Okay, if.
So I'd go down to the next page, any comments on, yeah, there we go, any comments on forty-seven, forty-eight? About forty-nine and fifty. Fifty, fifty-one. Is, this is the goal, so you've seen the goals before, they're on that page eleven and twelve. From my, our last meeting. I'd go on to chapter six, so this is our, basically our transportation element. And if you have any feedback on this one note I would make just to get going as we enter into this section. I verified with Melissa that Public Works has reviewed the general plan, they've given feedback. And have revisions from Public Works have actually been added in this section, so. And I can, we can pinpoint a couple of things in the, in the goals at the end if you'd like, but. Do you have any questions on there or the next page?
I have a quick question on the connected and safe section, so were there any comments about crossing the railroads?
No, we didn't have any comments that I recall, Melissa, do you remember anything from, yeah, I don't recall anything about railroad crossings.
That seems to be a gap then.
Okay, we can address railroads. We can certainly address railroads.
Yeah, it's been a long time problem in the community with, you know, trains backing up at Third South and and Eighth North where people, well, not Third South, sorry, but people can't cross.
Sure.
So, thanks.
Thank you.
Can I add a comment there, along with Miss Whipple's? Um, I think it's just important that we recognize that Provo has a lot of barriers for transportation. The river is a barrier for transportation, I-15 is a barrier for transportation, multiple train tracks are barriers for transportation. And we just have to be more conscientious in most communities in addressing how we get over and under and around those barriers, so. Just, just my paradigm generally on a citywide issue.
Yes.
I would echo Ms. Ellsworth's comment, I, I expected a lot more input frankly from Public Works on this document, there are some things conspicuous by their absence. Railroad crossings was one.
And I think that's because they've got, we've got their own, they've got their own transportation master plan that addresses a lot more of these elements. But I think it's certainly appropriate to address railroad crossings, that is, that is a huge issue.
Yeah, one, another would be Center Street slowdown. I don't see any mention of that. Slate Canyon is a, is a forty-five mile an hour thoroughfare, and it needs to be slowed down. Also, variation, I I read about bikes in every single paragraph, but I don't read anything about. One, there's one reference to East-West corridor need, and that's, that's, that's a huge consideration, we're going to have to hammer out one way or another, and.
Yeah, and that might be. Again, that might be addressed in their, in their master plan, because I know that the east-west has been, and another connection to I-15 has been addressed extensively with engineering.
Right, and Melissa, I'm not suggesting that we get into the weeds on that.
Right.
But it needs to be, those, these issues I've just highlighted need to be highlighted here, so they're, you know, present before us as opposed to.
And we spoke with Bill yesterday, we also felt there may be some.
I would just like to add that there aren't too many references to bikes.
Can't possibly be too many.
Anything on fifty-five or fifty-six? Go to fifty-seven. These are our goals. Public Works added. Right here, plant future transportation networks to accommodate future growth and avoid congestion. I believe this also added this C. Reese C was added. If your roadway.
I'm having trouble hearing.
Oh, yeah, sorry, I'm not talking into the microphone here, thank you. In, ensure future roadway capacity improvements, reduce congestion as growth-related transportation demands increase, so added there by public, those are two that I know were added. By Public Works around December. Ten, December, month of December, so. Anything else on that?
Yeah, just another suggestion, if I might, for you folks to think about.
Yes.
As I look at the connected and safe section, when I first saw that heading, I assumed that that would include not just safe roadways, but also public safety generally. And while there are allusions to public safety, we really don't focus on it much, and I, you know, my own bias is that. The number one priority of any government is public safety. There are some things that we, we could put in the general plan by way of initiatives that merit our consideration. And I'm sure if you, if you ask for a page worth of suggestions from fire, police, and EMTs, you get it.
So Bill, do you mean specifically in regards to land use? Because that was one thing Hannah Salzle pointed out to me that kind of opened my eyes was. The general plan is more specific to land use, so things that are on the ground and that we do, you know. So, because, because I kind of felt the same way, but then it did kind of open my eyes that, hey, that's not really the purpose of a general plan.
I I agree wholeheartedly, it is a land use plan, and I guess I'm just reacting to the fact that we've got a lot of stuff in here that goes beyond land use.
Right, now, that, that doesn't negate that maybe there's a lot of other things that go beyond land use in other areas, yes, true.
But for example. For example, the need for a new fire station, land use.
Right, that would be, that would be something that seems like it'd be appropriate, right?
Yeah, I I agree with the general concept, that's why, in addition to the general plan, we have a sustainability plan in the office. And I see just a ton of sustainability plan type issues in this document.
Okay, so one thing you would like to provide feedback on is, is maybe save those for the sustainability plan and save the general plan for, if, if, if we're going to. Kind of be true to the intent of the general plan.
The general rule, yes.
Okay. Noted?
Noted, also, we, we have reached out to both fire and police for their input on the plan.
So we are out of time, and I know, Ms. Whipple's like, hold on, I was lining up my questions, getting ready to go. But unfortunately, we really can't cover it all, this is fun, though.
Yeah, isn't it, though? So we didn't make it to chapter seven, so we're happy to include that in, in next time, if you would.
Let's do that, I just, just to keep things on track, we've got two really important topics, so.
Yes.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Thank you both so much, and I hope you're not sick next week, after, after us beating you up, so.
Now, thank you all for your input, we really, really appreciate you taking the time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Could I make one quick point of clarification, so we are kind of on pause, we intend to continue to go forward with the next, I guess it's kind of towards cliff, do we continue? To plan towards the next council meeting to go over these items, even though we're on pause, is that the desire?
That was the, the plan so that we could, the council could have a real good discussion about what's in it, and that will help the council understand what's lacking, if there's anything lacking, or what changes they might want to make, so. I I would recommend to the council that, that we still have them come back even with the pause, so that you have, I mean, you have not had. The, the in-depth look at it like some of the other groups that have, and this would be helpful to you, is my opinion.
And we'll keep doing our emails.
Okay.
I have a quick question, Mr. Hoben, if I may, just about the, the survey that the administration's doing, I, I, I suppose we can just. Get more clarification as we move forward, but I'm not entirely sure what is going, what is the, what is the objective of that survey and what's going to happen to the general plan as a result of that, but is that all's? Bridges we're going to cross when we get to it, but that's, that's still unclear in my mind.
Mister Larson, can you just send out an email to us and give us more info, information on that survey? Thank you, and and Mister Handley, the only reason I say that is because we really have to get to maps, and I think that there's some deadlines associated with some of these maps, so we got to make sure we have the conversations today on them. Oh, hey. Uh, we have thirty minutes for a presentation and discussion by Mr. Stracken regarding the redistricting adjustments to the Provo City School Board, or Provo School Board District Maps. Go ahead.
Okay, here's a hundred and five maps, how do you want to go through them?
Two minutes each.
Two minutes each, no, we're not going to go through them in the way you might, but this is, this is the, the pile of maps that were submitted. They are not, no, so what happened was, they sent them to us in five zip files, because there were twenty-one maps in each, so. We actually have them on, in, the PDF is actually uploaded to the shared drive that we gave you, plus I gave you a copy in the email I sent last night. So you have a chance to look at them, but as we've considered how to deal with these hundred and five maps, and and really, let me say. I, I think the, the response from the community has been very helpful in the number of maps that were submitted. I, I do know that there's a handful of maps, maybe more than a handful submitted by people in this room. But it was an interesting exercise to go through it. So we're going to talk about two different sets of redistricting issues, the first one is on the school district, and then we'll come, when we're done, we'll talk about the council districts. This slide is just a reminder of what the, the state code actually says about redistricting requirements. Essentially, what you have is, there's no provision for large seats, and the only specific requirement, so that they need to be substantially equal in population and as contiguous and compact as practicable. And it's my understanding that compact is in the eye of the beholder. But we'll go through some of this, so where we are in the timeline is that here on February first, you get a chance to review it. We're sending all these to the school board, so they can review that and give some input. February fifteenth is the date that you need to receive public comment and adopt a new district by ordinance, or new list of districts by ordinance. February fifteenth is the date that you need to receive public comment and adopt a new district by ordinance, or new list of districts by ordinance. And so, we're anticipating having some discussion in the work meeting and in the evening meeting. If you get to a point by the work meeting that you know which one that you prefer, well, that would, that might be helpful, but we'll have multiple versions of the ordinance based on but whatever you shortlist for maps. So, let me just show you kind of what we've done. Talking about different things about how maps are done, and this is the really nice GIF, GIF file that, that Stan Mischinsky put together for us. It's all hundred and five maps cycling through. So, if you don't want to look at all the paper, just watch that. The, the GIS guys are fantastic. So the criteria, so obviously, we have this substantially equal population, contiguous and compact. One of the, one of the things that, one of the measures, or not measures, but one of the parameters that sometimes comes up in, in developing, keeping districts or redistricting is core preservation. Can we keep the core of the district together? We wanted to know if, as you drew the maps, how many incumbents would be displaced by a map? And then, because we've been getting emails and phone calls and such from people asking for a west side district, we considered whether you could put a west side district. What we did find is you cannot put a west side district without disrupting at least one council or one board member. So then we, so, so here's the parameters. The parameters are for, for population is that we're supposed to keep it plus or minus five percent. So about roughly up to a ten percent range. And the way that the program did it was, you can see the little green line in the upper part where it says population. And, and the idea is to try and get these populations roughly averaged somewhere in the sixteen thousand range.
Just a quick question. We talked about population. I assume we're talking about gross population, not student population.
Gross population for the city.
Student population is really more relevant numbers, isn't it?
Well, it's in those numbers. It's part of whatever the number was in the census.
What I mean is, if you want roughly equal representation, you'd focus on the number of students in a district. As opposed, if you have some districts that have very few.
Oh, you're talking schools. Sorry, I'm thinking of that big ten thousand block of BYU students. No, I, you could, one of the, one of the measures was school, students. Did I not list that? Oh, I should have thrown that on there. We did also look at the balanced district for students. So I'll pull, I'll show you where that is as we come through it.
But these numbers go off total population.
These numbers go off total population, but in terms of, but in one of the, one of the criteria we set up for you, and I somehow spaced it on this slide, these slides, was that we did look at whether, how many schools were in each district, if, to see if we could distribute them appropriately or approximately.
And these numbers, Mr. Filmer, that, those numbers on that particular chart, as far as what you have to base the districts on, or have to make the districts comparable in, has to be overall population. But you can use student population or school representation as one of your criteria for evaluating the different maps.
Well, that can be a moderating.
Right, it could be a moderating, but these numbers.
This is on total population.
Yeah, but Mr. Filmer, these, these numbers still have to, to average sixteen thousand something. I think it's like sixteen thousand three hundred, or whatever the average is, but.
Thank you.
So we had to do that. So we looked at contiguous and compactness. Again, it's the eye of the beholder. We went actually and looked at every single map and tried to identify which ones looked compact, which didn't look compact, et cetera, and then gave them scores based on this range. We went through and looked at core preservations. And so there's fifty-nine precincts in the, in the city, and we tried to see how many stayed in, in roughly the same area as they, as they were when you draw the maps. So that's core preservation. Incumbents displaced, we scored nine if you displaced none, and, and one if you displaced two or three incumbents. A question about a west side district. Could you, you got a nine, if you could create a district that are all in, all, the whole area west of the district? And like I say, you can do that. But most of the time, we found that most of the maps didn't have that. So then we looked at raw scores. So basically, what you'll see at the top of this one, Bryson Hall Jensen, et cetera, those are the current board members in their districts. And we didn't worry so much about the final maps in terms of whether they ended up in, the numbering was the same, et cetera. But we did rank them, and we looked at, you know, were they displaced? Did it create a west side? Were they compact? Were there's core preservation? And then here's that question, I think that answers yours a little bit, Bill, is, is the balanced number of schools per district. So we tried to score those based on, on that. Now, this is just a raw score. So when we asked you as, as council members, we, we gave you a survey based on those preferences. Balanced number of schools, precincts are compact, creates a west side district, core preservation, incumbents not displaced. We asked you to rate all your preferences on a nine-point scale. Basically, if you were totally in favor, you gave it a nine. If you were totally against that concept, then you, you gave it a one. And then the responses were analyzed using a pairwise comparison. And so each of your answers were compared not only to yourself, ranked according to your own preferences, but ranked in according, against everyone else's. And so then we averaged each of your responses to generate the weights. And so what we found is that the, that balanced number of schools actually became the most dominant weight, criteria that you, you chose. And nearly thirty percent to about twenty-eight percent, I think it ended up as. Then it was questioned was whether they were compact. That was the next important one. West Side District was the middle one. Core preservation was less important, and, and the least important to you was the incumbents not displaced. So then we took those rate ranks, weighted scores, and we compiled this list. And in your, in, in the email we sent you, there is a longer list of all hundred and five, and you can see them, and we've ranked them by, we've shown them in different ways. You can find them alphabetically. You can find them based on, you know, whether the raw score was the most important or the rank was most important. But if you look up in the yellow here, you'll see under rank weighted, we've got the top ten listed up there for you. And so then we wanted to show you how to, how that played out. So if you put it into a bar chart, you've got the raws in green and the weighted's in blue, and, and you can see how those rank. So the next one I'm gonna show you is how to, how to take those.
So, could you go back?
Hey, Cliff.
Yes.
Please, please explain what we're looking at here.
Hold on, which one do you want?
Top ranked maps.
Raw, that's the raw score. So go back, so, so go back to this. The raw score was just taking each one of these, and that's what I was about to show you. If you go into each one of these maps, and you look at, you look at, say, better balance, you can look on the first part, you'll see what district is represented in there, whether or not the incumbent is still in that district. So, so on that very first one, none of them are displaced from the area. If you drop down a few lines to Provo twenty-two school board map, you'll see that, that the red area has actually encompasses two incumbents right now. So there'd be one in, one displaced. And so, according to our ranking, that one would, would've got a seven for score.
So on the next slide.
Yeah.
What? Could you go to the next one?
Yep.
What are? No, I guess it's the next one.
That one?
You're going backwards. Let's go forwards. Yeah, what are these descriptors here on the left?
Those are names of maps.
Oh, I see.
So if you look at the maps I handed out, you'll see each of them has a name. Now, we didn't name the, the maps. Whoever contributed them, named them, and so there's some, there's some interesting maps, or map names. You know, there's one like says, pick this, that kind of thing.
The third line says Provo two thousand twenty-two school board map.
Somebody submitted a map with that name.
Is that the current map?
No. No. So, in fact, if you go down, if you go down through the list of, of the ones we emailed you, you'll see, for instance, that there's school plan number two, school plan number three, school plan number four. So people named them whatever they named.
Whatever submitted. So I could have named mine Blue Dart or Express, and that would have been the name.
Yes, but we did tell our GIS folks that if there's anything offensive, to change it to something not offensive.
Ms. Ellsworth has a question.
It wasn't a question. I just wanted to say, Cliff, I'm really impressed with this level of analysis and quantitative crunching. So thank you to you and the staff who have done this. This is tremendous.
Yeah, actually, thank you, and that's a good acknowledgement for our whole staff, because everybody contributed to it to some extent. I mean, our intern came up with the pairwise comparisons, and, and, and we built that into, into, into the, into the, the, the analysis. Now, this is just one way for you to do it. I mean, you could just pick a, you know, you could pick one out of the hat. You could pick one based on whatever, you know, you guys think is best. But we tried to identify, how do we narrow this down to a manageable number based on your preferences? So, where I was going with this, if you take the rankings for any map, and you go back to the raw scores, you can go back and see how they were scored on each individual item. So for example, number one on that list is we call it Balance for Dixon. If you go to Balance for Dixon, which is the second one down, you'll see that there are, there's only one incumbent displaced. It does create mostly a west side, but not completely. It's, it's still relatively compact. It does preserve the core. And there, and it gets high scores for balancing the number of schools per district. And, and then you look at another one, say NW two, which was actually was number one until Bill weighed in the other day. Just having fun with you. But NW two keeps all of the incumbents in their places, can't create a full west side district, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm gonna show you, Councilor Ellsworth, your hand is up. Is that from before? Or you still have a question?
Uh, that's just a, a carryover from my previous comment, but I stand by my comment of appreciation for your hard work.
Thank you, and, and our team is really great. Like I say, it was, it was a team effort putting this together. I just get to stand in front of you and show off what, what, what we've done. So we, we took these rankings, the weighted rankings, and put this in this graphical shape. And then this was to teach you how you can go back and look, but these are the top twelve maps based on those rankings. And so one of the questions we have is, you know, how do you want to go? So if, again, for example, we were talking about how difficult it is to create a west side and, and still manage some of the other things. With your preferences, number six on the top right is the only one on that list that has an, an all west side. You look at all the rest, and there's still basically two districts on the west side in most of those. So then, the question I have for you is, you know, is, is the criteria useful to you, the, the way we presented it? If it is, then, then proceed down this path. One of the questions is, we, what we, we promised the school board that we would send them these maps. And we, one of the questions that we have is, do you want to do a pairwise analysis of the school board members' preference? In other words, do the same survey, see what maps play out? Because I have a feeling that if you go back, that the preferences shown here on the right, some of them will be very different than yours. So, so that's a question, and you can have them weigh in on that, and then we could come back in two weeks and, and show you what, what we've come up with there. Mr. Okay, so, we'll, we'll work on getting the survey out to them, and then they meet next Tuesday. And we'll ask them to give us their, we, we'll, I'll try and just do the same thing for them, is show them what, what our analysis based on their information comes out as. And then what we'd actually like to do right now is, part of this, if you're happy with what we've done, and you're willing to look at those, if, if the twelve maps we've got are what you want, we're suggesting that you post the top ten or twelve on Open City Hall for the next week or so. And then let the public weigh in on those maps, see what comments come up. And then you could even select other maps that you might prefer. And then, once we get all the other information, we'll get, we'll get the information back. And so we could also throw up the school district preferred maps as well, if you want, just to get some comments. But at the end of the day, you get, as a council, get to make the choices, or make the choice of what districts, what the districts will look like for the next ten years.
We do have some raised hands, Cliff. So George, Hanley, go ahead.
I just want to express support for doing the same process with the school district as you've done with us. I think it's really vital for me to know what their feelings are on this. Obviously, we're, we're the body that needs to make the final decision, but I, I, I just don't see any good reason to omit their careful examination and their pri, their sense of their priorities i- as part of our decision-making. So I would strongly urge us to, to do that.
Do we need a motion for that?
It's always helpful if you.
All right.
I would, I would move, I would so move.
Second, can I, can I just add something? Can we discuss, sorry?
Discussion on the motion, go ahead.
Sorry, my, my comment was gonna be that, that, yeah, I, I strongly supportive of, and, and really would be heavily influenced by, you know, the board's opinions on this. But one of the questions that I have is that perhaps we wait the board members, and then also an administrative component as well, to allow for, you know, district administration to weigh in as well. You know, and, and not that they weigh anymore, but just as another voice among, you know, so seven plus an administrative component as well.
Sure. When you say the administrative component, what do you mean by that?
Superintendent, somebody on the administrative side as opposed to just the board.
Got it. Okay.
It's a great idea. So, amend the motion?
You have to amend the motion if you want.
Yeah, I, I would propose that we amend the motion.
To?
To include that administrative component with the board.
So do you want? Do you want, do you want us to do a pairwise analysis of the seven board members and also include as number eight?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So same motion, just add the administrative component.
Yeah, I'll second that as amended.
Any discussion on the amended motion? Okay, we'll take a vote on that. All in favor? Mr. Hanley?
Yes.
Ms. Ellsworth?
Yes.
Unanimous. Okay.
Just two quick comments. It would, if we're thinking of posting the top ten maps, I'm thinking if there was a way, we could whittle it down to the top five maps after input from the school board and the superintendent. That might make a much more meaningful discussion and response.
So put the top, so.
Top five.
Top five from each?
Well, maybe that, maybe they're gonna blend.
Because one of the things we're interested, just as, partly as a curiosity, we're gonna be interested to see if there's any overlap.
Yeah.
Right? And, and I, I do think there, there won't, I, I think there may be one or two that will overlap, but but we really won't know till we see what their.
Yeah.
Analysis comes out.
Just, just for ease of analysis and response, I'd try to limit at least to our top five and their top five, and hopefully there's some overlap.
Okay.
The, the other point I wanted to ask was, I initially, my instinct was, well, of course, the west side ought to have its own district. You know, it's, it's not just presently, but for growth considerations. But then I think in a memo from Travis, there was something to the effect that some people had commented that that would limit them to one vote, whereas now they have two votes on the, on the school district. Has that been considered in any depth?
It, it comes up in, in discussion. I mean, it's one of those cases of be careful what you, what you ask for, right, and what you get. Because you're absolutely right, and, and, you know, we didn't do any formal analysis, I don't think, on stuff like that. But actually, we did. You, John, one of John's memos talked about when you have, when you create something for a group, like you create, let's say you create the west side, and you create it for them. What sometimes you end up with is the others all voting against that group's interests, and they, and then not accomplishing what they want after all. And, yes, they got more representation, but, you know, in many ways, it, it also can undermine their ability to get things done. I mean, the reality of, is, is still, if you want to get elected representatives on the, on the west side, you gotta run people on the west side. So.
Cliff?
Sure.
Karen posted that we can only get Open City Hall feedback through the tenth. So, do we need to post? We can only get Open City Hall feedback through February tenth. So do we need to do contemporaneous, you know, post to Open City Hall, pick ten maps, post them, and then also get feedback from the school board, and then come together to make a final decision?
They, what we have, maybe what we have to do, because they meet on the eighth. The reason we picked the tenth is, is we'd like to get all this information to you for the weekend. You know, Karen's not in the room, but, so I apologize if I misspeak Karen. But if, if you're willing to wait until Monday for a final report on, on, on what comes, we could probably keep it open long enough till the, the Monday and have. and have or till Sunday night type thing and and then incorporate what we could for four or five days about the school district maps.
Okay, so give me your proposed timeline there, maybe dates. So February, what we would put up this, February X, we would put up this.
Fourteenth. So I would, if if I were to extend it, and Karen may knock me in the head when we get upstairs, but I would extend it to, you know, if I if I if I were you and you wanted to have more input, I'd say, let's do it till 7:00 AM on Monday, the 14th. That way, when we come in, we can pull the analysis, we can email, we can put it all together and email you and then bring it. And then we can also then post it online so that everybody can see what's coming up the next day for the discussions.
So when would we get feedback on from the school board? Would we be doing two, these two different pieces at once or?
School board's going to have between now and Monday, they meet or sort of Tuesday, they meet Tuesday afternoon. And what we've asked them to do is give us your preferred maps. Now, we hadn't considered doing, at that point, hadn't considered doing a pair wise. But if if we were, if they were to participate in a pair wise, then we could narrow it down based on their preferences and show them what their top 10.
And then you're saying then post from Tuesday to the following Monday?
Correct. And basically Tuesday, basically, basically, probably realistically Wednesday to Sunday.
Does anybody have any concerns with that?
No, but a point of information, if I might, do each of these maps have some attachment that talks about the pros and cons behind each map?
No.
Because just the raw map isn't terribly informative.
Yeah, it's the it's the raw map and and all we could do is post some of the information. We could, we could post a list with open city hall. I mean, we can put a number of resources that if somebody wants to pour through and see how we came to where we are, you know, what we give the raw scores and they can see why they got scored a certain way.
Well, education is key. To just throw these maps out doesn't really.
Yeah. So we can, we can build some information and make, put what we can to get out there so people can look at it and we'll get some interest from it. Again, it won't be a statistical survey, but at least you can get some comments on 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 what scene and 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 still also have this to be more open for the public to see the process that you followed.
Karen has a raised hand. We cannot hear you, Karen.
Does this work?
Yes.
Okay. It had the wrong microphone selected. Okay, so so the key to whatever we put on open city hall is is that we want one survey going, whatever length of time. So if we're going to wait to get feedback from the school board before choosing what maps to list there, then it shortens what time we're going to be able to put this out to the public. My original thought was to put out the ones that we've ranked top 10 based on the criteria we have. And then you're going to get those results and the school board results. And we'll pull that all together for you for the 15th. So if you want us to wait and incorporate the school board first, it just shortens the period of time. And as far as explaining each, I've actually developed, I've been doing this while you guys have been meeting on other topics. I've been developing little paragraphs that explain each of those maps based on the criteria. So so I will have that ready to go. Yeah, I understand the concern. Looking at the map, you don't know what you're looking for.
So the open hall question, open city hall question really boils down to, do you put your maps out first and get some input and comment? Or if I'm interpreting Karen correctly, we could wait until after we hear from the school board, provided they get us all that information that that next night. But then that only leaves five days for input on your, on any of the maps.
I make a motion that we get feedback from the school board. And then hopefully that helps us narrow down the number of maps that go out, which might address Mr. Fillmore's concern. And maybe we only have five or seven that go out, probably get better quality feedback.
Okay, so wait until then, put five or 10 out, depending on how many, up to 10.
And then all of us just really pushing on social media to say, hey, go to open city hall. This is really important, short turnaround time, that sort of thing.
So a five day review. Okay. We work that, Karen?
I will make it work.
Well, I need a second on the motion. If somebody wants to a discussion on the motion? Anybody like a better idea, different or a different idea better? Okay, we'll take a vote on the motion. All in favor? Ms. Ellsworth?
Yes.
Mr. Hanley?
Yes.
Great. Cliff? I had a thought. I wonder if we might get people confused like Bill? Can we give generic names to these maps so people don't think like, oh, this is, you know what I mean?
We could do, we could do that. We'll we'll come up with something.
When we do post them.
We might just number them.
Yeah, I think that'll be easier if we just number them.
Yeah, we'll rename and renumber.
Sorry to those who came up with amazing names, but I think there could be some confusion by people.
Sometimes the names did help us understand what they were about, but we can capture that now in the paragraph to describe something.
All right, are we done with this?
With this item, we're ready for the next one.
Perfect. Wow. Awesome. Okay. Our next item of discussion is regarding the redistricting adjustments to the city council district maps, also presented by Cliff Stracken.
I have a presentation for that one as well. Now, council members, we've been doing a lot of, we've sent a lot of memos out that had information that helped you understand some of the issues around voting patterns and things like that. And so I'm going to show you most of this is you've already seen, so I'm just going to go really fast through it and stop where where we need to stop. So again, the question you have right before you is whether to keep the five district in two citywide format or change it to something else. You asked for some discussion on that. The other options include like the seven district, a four plus three, seven at large. There's all sorts of permutations for that. You asked questions about, you know, why do citywide counselors, where do they reside? You asked about the cost to run campaigns versus citywide districts. You asked about voter turnout. You asked about pros and cons of both types. This map, you recall, showed where in green, all the past citywide counselors and yellow were the, were all the candidates that ran but didn't win. And then purple was are all the current council members. We talked about, you know, again, where they reside. We talked about cost per vote. We talked about all these, all these details. And again, you can always go back and look at them. We talked about the pros and cons of each type. Then we came to some conclusions. We recognize that District One has had, you know, kind of an outside result influence on the outcome for a number of reasons. One is more candidates from there. You've also had higher performance in terms of voter turnout from from that district. You also, we talked about some of the the ups and downs. So one of the questions came up was, you asked last, was what determines voter participation? So this slide I just added, just to summarize, we talked about voter efficacy or external efficacy, internal efficacy, the opportunity costs for voting. And and you know, you saw that memo. But it comes down now to, you know, in order for us to move forward with redistricting for the council, and we have to be done in May, preferably by May, because we're being budget, still be in budget season then. What do you want to do? Do you want to maintain the status quo? Do you want to change the format? If so, how does that look? Do you want to, we're really running out of time to refer to the question to the public unless we do some kind of survey? Or are you ready to proceed with redistricting? And and then I I crafted you, if you made a decision today, how quickly could we get the timeline going for redistricting? We could launch by Monday with the council maps, depending on how you want them, you know, how you want. We could give two weeks to 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 take map applications. And then we could distribute them and basically follow the same path, only without consulting the school district. By March 1st, you could be doing what you just did today. March 15th or March 29th, you could adopt them. And by the end of March, you could be done with the redistricting and and have that submitted. And that's kind of where we're at. So I'm back to the question, what do you want to do?
So one concern I would have would be, we're pushing the school board maps, hey, we need feedback. And there might end up being some confusion. I don't know. From the public's part of, hold on, we got lots of maps going around. So I don't know if that would work with the timeline of waiting until we settle the school board piece before we push maps out. Not saying we don't do anything in the meantime, but something to think about.
Yeah, no, that's that's clear. I just wanted to show you what you could do, right? So if you waited until after the, let's say you decided to wait until the, after the 15th to to push them out, we'd be ready to go. The other side of that is we just push things back by about two weeks all the way through. The other thing that comes up is if you decided to go to a seven members, seven sept districts, you may want to, you may want to revisit what you're doing with the school board. You may want to consider on yours, do you wait them to include? You may not, you you probably don't care for council districts, whether or not you have an equal number of elementary schools in each area, right? So those are some of the questions that you'll need to weigh as, once you've decided, once you start debating what you want to do. But really, I think what's helpful is at some point is to have a motion as to what you want your council districts to look like in terms of the format and and then up and down vote on them.
Ms. Ellsworth?
Yeah, I'm not sure where this will go, but I I do think that we need more representation through seven districts. I think that's beneficial. I know that there's pros and cons to every form. In the past, there were three citywide, and now there's two citywide. There's going to be pros and cons to every form, but I feel like citizens would probably be better served with seven districts. Whatever cons there are to that kind of system, I don't know that we're seeing that with the school district, right? They only have districts and and they're not experiencing any, in my opinion, any significant adverse or oppositional or negative issues with that kind of structure. The state legislature is also operating with a one person per district model. There's not citywide legislative representatives for the state. So I'm interested to see where this goes. I'm just going to put a motion out there and move that the council work towards, or I'm not sure how to say this, but the council create seven districts and identify alternatives for seven council districts.
Jumped right into the arena. Do we have a second?
Yeah, I'm just putting it out there.
A second on that motion? Mr. Hanley, your hand is raised. Are you seconding the motion or did you have a different comment?
No, I had a different comment, so I'll wait.
Okay, yeah, hold off on that. All right.
Same here, different comment.
Okay. So it appears we don't have a second for that motion. Motion fails.
Motion, yeah, it's not even a valid motion at this point.
Let's go to Mr. Hanley, who had his hand up, and then Mrs. Whipple, Ms. Whipple, and then Mr. Fillmore, and then Mrs. McKay. I'm just putting the order out there right now.
All right. Well, I I was, I was going to try to expedite the conversation as well. I I think I have been weighing this carefully in my mind. And I I sympathize with what Ms. Ellsworth described as sort of pros and cons. I don't think there's a a perfectly clean solution to some of the problems that we are trying to solve. But I'm 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 feeling like the current status quo of five districts and two citywide is is the right way to go. And I think the reason for that for me is that even though, yes, there is a predominance of District One candidates historically, that has been shifting. And I do think that maybe redrawing the districts a little more carefully within the, you know, maximum allowance that we're given with the 5% on either end, maybe one way to help mitigate a little bit against that. But I am very worried about the 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 benefits that come from the citywide seat in that it allows for more more candidates from different districts to run. I think there's just no question in my mind that that's a very significant pro to the current system. And so I think I would prefer to keep the five two and then look very closely at, you know, how to how to draw those boundaries in in the most effective way possible. So that is my motion that we stick with. We agreed today that we stick with the five two and then move forward with with that exploration of the the district boundaries.
Mr. Jones, comment?
Well, Councilor Hanley, I was just going to make, I mean, there's no, I guess, harm in voting for it unless it also fails, which then leaves you with kind of a conundrum about what that really means. But I guess I would just say, no motion is necessary to achieve that same result because that's what the law already says. So there's only an a a motion necessary if you want to do something other than five two. Although I can see that, you know, the spirit of the motion may be just to end debate by saying, let let's vote so that there's no more discussion about this.
Right. From our perspective, we just want to know, we're looking for direction to move forward with some format.
Okay, I I think we, let's just go with the motion, just for the sake of let's see what comments come from it. Is that all right?
I'll second it.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Fillmore. Debate on the motion.
Were you, were you going to go on the order you had before? Rachel?
Yes, let's do that. Thank you, Mr. Fillmore, for the reminder.
So my question was just, if we go to seven council districts, how important is it that those districts would align with the school board districts? And that actually matters if we're going to decide to keep it at the five, because you don't have to have that complete alignment and overlap. So it's just how much of a priority is that?
So I don't, I would say that we don't really even have to discuss it because seven failed. Or do you feel like it's relevant to the five two motion that's on the table?
Well, just the question of how much we try to align with the school board districts, I think is still relevant.
My turn.
So I think she kind of threw out a question for the council or maybe staff, if anybody wants to answer that. Go ahead, Mr. Fillmore.
Yeah, I'll respond. I I wanted to concur with Mr. Hanley's observations. The old phrase is if it ain't broke, don't fix it. And I think the council works pretty well on the current format. And I'm sensitive to the fact that according to your memo, you got some comments back from some school board members. Sometimes when you have those seven discrete areas, it kind of tribalizes the school board a little bit in terms of people.
Well, don't don't misquote me. I'm, I'll get kiboshed here. But but there there are pluses and minuses to both types of representation. And I think it's just natural that that would be one of them. But they also were very clear to say, we don't feel like that's a real issue. But, you know, it's a possibility.
Okay, I appreciate that clarification. I I kind of see our, I kind of see our system with the five and two is kind of a conflation of a constitutional model. In our constitution, both state and federal talks about the Senate and the House. And the Senate is supposed to have the broader view, right? And I think it's a helpful thing to have citywide candidates to have a broader view. Another pro is that it gives members of any district, any of the five districts, to representatives who are directly responsible to them. I think that's, I think that's important.
It's actually, it's actually three. Or if you count the mayor, so if you have five and two, you've got your local rep, two citywide, plus the mayor.
That's right. The other thing is I I'm really hesitant to to take any step that that somehow adversely affects a district where the citizens are more civically minded than another district. It just strikes me as really counterintuitive. If what we're looking for is what the founding fathers talked about, public virtue, meaning involvement and self-education and whatever, I don't see any value in in penalizing particular district. So I'm I'm all in favor of sticking with five and two. We're going to have to deal with the boundaries in any event.
Thank you.
Well, and that's not to say that other districts are not civic minded, right?
Oh, I'm saying, I'm saying the District One has has been kind of mildly maligned because they're more actively involved in civic elections. They they register more, they vote more, and they like more. I don't think that's a ground for taking any action that's adverse to such a district. I would hope all districts would be that way. And maybe we could do some things to encourage all five districts to to register at a higher rate and vote at a higher rate. And maybe we could do some things to encourage all five districts to, to register at a higher rate and vote at a higher rate.
Thank you. I, I did just wanna, um, maybe make a comment to Ms. Whipple's question, cause I wanna kinda provide a response and then maybe we can get some more people to comment as well. But I think, um, the school board, when we're looking at school board districts, we took specific criteria. Some of that, you know, is number of schools and, and so that might not necessarily apply to a council district where we might be more concerned with like land use issues or, um, underrepresented neighborhoods, which could cross over with school board districts is, of course. I just think that we look at different criteria. So they might not necessarily align. So even if we went to a seven district model, we might, they might not necessarily align, but that would be kind of my, my comment to that. So let's see, we had Mrs. McKay, were you next? No? Okay, Mr. Shipley, you're up.
All right, so maybe I'm in a minority here, but, um, I, I do think there's merit in expanding, um, districts. I do think there's significant merit in the idea that over the next three or four years, the West Side will justify a district by population, but not by the, the, you know, the most recent census. We know that that's, as far as land is concerned, that's where most of the growth will happen. I think that there's unique issues associated with the West Side being west of I-15, connectivity issues. I, I just think there's a lot of unique issues on the West Side. And so, uh, my preference, my strong preference would be to move that direction sooner than later. And, and that would require us to go to at least six districts is my opinion. We, you know, you could accomplish it with seven. Obviously you can stretch it and get close with six, you know, not, not perfect, but something that, that accomplishes something for the West Side of I-15. And, uh, and, and helps that. I, I'm persuaded that if we, um, you know, have a situation where we have two citywides and a, a counselor from District One along with those two citywides, along with a mayor, that, that does cause a little bit of imbalance. I'm, I'm not trying to penalize District One, you know, I'm not trying to throw shade on District One. I think it's great. They have the participation they do, but there's also an argument for, you know, that, that, that it's not about being overrepresented by a certain area, but perhaps being underrepresented in other demographics. And, and, and I think one of the things that I'm persuaded by and one of the reasons that I wanted to expand the districts, whether it's six or seven, is that talking to, um, some past, uh, citywide city councilors actually, uh, were the, were the initial people to persuade me that we should look at this. Their comments about how much it costs, you know, to run a citywide campaign. Their comments about, um, how consolidated power can seem, you know, to the average citizen in Provo. Those kinds of comments are, are persuaded me to think in terms of, of just expanding districts in some way. I don't know what that looks like, six or seven are the only two options we have. The reason I didn't second seven is I'm also persuaded that having at least one extra, you know, person that can run from every district or one extra representative, you know, for every single district is, there's a lot of merit to that. So I can see both sides, but I do think there's some unique situations over the next 10 years, specifically for the West Side that I think need to be addressed. And I think 10 years is too long to, to not have somebody that, uh, is thinking West Side of I-15 and, and, and not, you know, not that Travis can't think about West Side of I-15, right? Not that the citywide, you know, people can't think of West Side of I-15, but having somebody that lives and has lived there, it, it does feel different. Uh, the connectivity does feel different. Um, and, and I, and I think, you know, maybe that's why Shannon is sensitive or Ms. Ellsworth, I can speak for her, but maybe that's why she's sensitive to this too, is that we, we both are living in areas that, that, that feel like for a long time, you know, just don't, don't get quite the same attention. And so, you know, maybe that's our, our perspective and, and I don't wanna speak, sorry, I shouldn't have even said that for you, Ms. Ellsworth, but for me personally, that carries a lot of weight. I think we do need to think through, you know, some of these areas that, that don't get represented necessarily in a way that really fits their, what's going on in their area. So anyway, my, my, I have a strong preference to, to expanding, but I can, I can already hear, I can read the room. I don't think there's support for that. But I wanna just make sure that it's understood publicly that I'm, I'm strongly supportive of, of adding an additional one, even if it meant that it eliminates my position, right? So if we went to six, I'd be happy to eliminate a citywide position. That would be me here in two years, right? So I, I'm not, this isn't self-serving. I really do believe that somebody could really serve the West Side and I do believe that it justifies it sooner than the 10-year mark that we're gonna get to in, in eight more years, so.
Would you like to make a substitute motion?
I don't think it's worth, you know, unless I hear other, other comments, I don't think it's worth even a vote on it. I think I just wanted to make sure that people understood that I'm strongly supportive of expanding it. I don't think there's support on the council for it.
And I'll agree with Mr. Shipley in what he said. Uh, I a hundred percent agree with him. Thank you for speaking on my behalf.
I'd make one comment. It's, I don't know if, you know, the, the current, what some people call an imbalance. I don't, we don't know if that's a historic anomaly. If you go back more than 15 years, you know, to three, four, five decades prior, it wasn't that way at all. If anything, the balance shifted south for some reason. So I, maybe we're trying to predict the future. I do agree with you that, uh, the West Side merits more representation. I just think maybe we wait 10 years and see how things evolve.
Can I, can I just answer that first part? Cause, cause I've been thinking about that a lot. I, 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 I don't, again, it, it's not about District One even, you know, it's about any district having the potential to have a mayor and three counselors representing that one district. So eventually it could move to District Four, right? And we could be talking about a mayor and three counselors from District Four and having the same conversation that, that seems a little tilted, right? To, to whatever that specific region, you know, their interests. And so I don't, I don't think it's specific to District One. I think it could happen in any district and I think it's just the nature of five and two that right now you can get to a, a majority on the council pretty quick in one district. And I, I think the six and one or the seven districts just prevent that from ever being the case.
That's an interesting point, David. I, I'll, I'll go on the record to say that when you run for mayor, I'll give serious thought.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Ms. Whipple had a question or comment?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm leaning towards increasing the number of districts as well. So I'm letting you know that there's some support for that. One thing that I did wanna say is when we are looking at the voter turnout and the percentage of people actually vote in the different districts, districts two, three and five, which are, are the least participating in this are the ones with the greatest portion of the student population. And so that skews the number of registered voters and participation in that. And I don't know how we get around that, but that doesn't mean that those areas are not engaged or, you know, that they deserve less representation than District One. It means that you've got a different pool of people in those areas. So I don't, well, and I'm speaking from District Five, just don't, don't bag on us too hard because our numbers are, are low there.
That's a great point. Thank you, Rachel.
Incidentally, we played, was, we played with some of the maps when we in Crafton and we, we did create one that we called, uh, I think BYU Centered and you could have BYU and the two districts, precincts right south of it, and you would have no schools, about 80% students and no, um, uh, and, and no current people. You'd be running, uh, a very weak district. The, the biggest thing that would actually help us with some of this is if they would, if, if the county had broken up our precincts a little bit more. I mean, we, we found three districts that we, we, if they had just broken those three up or three precincts, if they just broken that up, that would have made a lot of difference in how the map shifts around. As far as, you know, as, as far as the, um, the five and two and the six and one, it, it still comes back to that issue of you know, do you have, at least with the five and two, you always have the opportunity to potentially have somebody extra representing not only your area, but looking at it from the citywide perspective. And, um, and as we've talked about with the seven, if you, you know, if you, if you could find yourself isolated because everyone else is saying, well, we want this on our side of the city, but I don't care. Where at least then you've still got people looking at us citywide. If you do go to six and one, then you've gotta also decide when, you know, in which election cycle does that person run? And, uh, and Bill, I would suggest that just, you know, before you tout him, remember the mayor's sitting right next to you.
Mr. Handley, you had your hand raised, but I think Mr. um, Shipley wanted to make a substitute motion, so let's go ahead and do that because your comment might be part of the discussion.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and just make the substitute motion for the sake of voting. Mr. Hoben's convinced me that we should just go through that, uh, even though I haven't heard necessarily the support, but I do think it's relevant to at least vote on it and show my support through vote in expanding, uh, the districts. So my motion is to expand to six and have it be a six-one split for districts.
Is there a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Whipple. And then Mr. Handley, you have a comment. Discussion on the motion or comment? Yeah, go ahead.
I, yeah, I, um, make a comment and then a comment on the motion. I, I, um, my, I just wanted to echo something that Ms. Whipple said just a moment ago. My district is, has one precinct, which is the highest voting precinct in the city, but, um, our, my district is so low in its turnout, um, primarily because of the student population issue, which is a, a real interesting problem and factor that I'd like to find some way to mitigate just a little bit with redrawing of district lines. I'm not sure that there's a, an adequate solution to that problem frankly, but I think, I think there are ways that we could improve it. I, I, I just, with regard to, you know, five-two, six-one or seven, I think, again, the reason why I prefer five-two, um, is that in every election, there's gonna be, you know, as we've talked about, there's multiple choices for people and it's multiple opportunities to run. The six-one feels very awkwardly balanced between the citywide and the, and the regional. And I don't, I don't know how to express this delicately, but I think there's a tension here between that we're all feeling between sort of regional representation versus, you know, something more general. And I think we'd all like to believe that in some sense, region shouldn't matter. And yet in some sense, region always can and does matter. And, um, I think if we overstress that region matters, then we run into certain kinds of risks where we assume that, you know, uh, as, as was described earlier, somebody in any one of our shoes can't speak adequately for somebody who lives in another part of the city. If that's the case, then our whole system's really broken, uh, because we have an obligation to, uh, the, the entire community, all of us. And I, I feel that obligation very heavily. I think the rest of us do. Obviously that's not always gonna be the case and I think that's why some balance is, is called for and, and to my mind, the five-two, balance feels right because again, there's always that citywide seat that comes up every two years, which means anyone in the city can run. And to the degree that there's been a predominant political narrative in Provo that some people wanna change, that's a challenge to get into those races and start disrupting that narrative. And I think in the last, uh, 10 years, I've seen, um, some very, uh, creative and compelling candidates running for citywide seats who are, you know, not necessarily fitting the traditional profile of candidates. And I think, um, I think that was healthy for our democracy and frankly, wouldn't maybe not have happened had it not been for those citywide seats. So I actually think in some ways as sympathetic as I am to the need for that regional representation, it's precisely for that, because of that sympathy, that I feel like the citywide seats, uh, should be preserved as is, um, as, as sort of a a way to, um, release some of that political energy in the citywide, uh, races. And as I've said before, I, my biggest concern, uh, is, is uncontested elections, which seem to only happen in the, in the district seats. And I think that's not good for the political process generally. That's where some of that, uh, those problems set in. So I, I like the sort of disruptive effect of the citywide seat.
Any additional discussion on the substitute motion? Okay, we'll go ahead and take a vote on the substitute motion to move to six-one. All in favor? Uh, Mr. Handley?
No.
Ms. Ellsworth?
Yes.
Sorry, I should have called out the in, um, the votes in, um, chamber first. So we had two in chamber in favor, Ms. Whipple and, um, Mr. Shipley. And then that was it. Online, Ms. Ellsworth in favor and Mr. Handley opposed.
So three, four fails.
I mean, technically for the record, you ought to ask who was opposed in chambers as well.
I'm sorry, opposed in chamber? Opposed would be Mr. Hoben, Mrs. McKay and Mr. Fillmore. Motion fails four-three. Now back to the five-two motion, which at this point, by default, we know. Well, let's go ahead and call the five-two motion that was put forth by Mr. Handley. Unless there's any additional discussion on the five-two motion, which we basically just had. Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Shipley.
Not that it matters at this point, but, but something that Mr. Handley said, I, I really appreciate his comments. I, for me, just as an outsider observing politics, um, the price tag on the citywide election is high enough that it, it, it becomes a detraction from somebody that wants it to be a disruptor, just a grassroots disruptor from ever accomplishing a citywide election. And so while I, I understand that sympathy, I, I, I just think that's a real challenge that we have in politics in general, you know, with, with everything from the mayor's race to, you know, to citywide seats, the fact that the price tag is so high is a real problem. Uh, and, and, uh, it, it does stop, you know, hardworking, well-intended, good, civically minded people and diverse people from ever running. And, 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 and so, again, one of the, one of the comments that I would just say is anything we can do going forward to obviously try to, try to mitigate those, those barriers to, to politics, you know, that people have and feel. And money's one of them, but it's, there's other things too, but anything we can do in our community to, to break down those barriers, I think would be a huge benefit to all of us.
Mrs. McKay?
As someone who just did a citywide, and I know Dave did a citywide also, it is really expensive and it is so much work. But, um, at the same time, my opponent and I did not fund that ourselves. You know, we did it through donations and a lot of work in getting those donations. The amount of work it takes in getting to know the entire city and all of the issues, and I think it makes for such a robust race. Because it is competitive and there's so much to cover and to make it through it. I think you just get, you get people that are serious about it and passionate about it. And it makes for such a much more robust race than you do in the districts. And I think it's part of that work and selling your goals and thoughts and plans about the city where you get the donations and you're not relying on someone's own financial means to get to the end. I think you do need to rely on the city as a whole to get to the end. And, um, I think that's really relevant.
Ms. Whipple?
So I'm somebody who decided not to run citywide because I live in downtown and I didn't think I would have access to the social capital to get those donations because of where I live, who my neighbors are. Unless it was just people up in the northeast area that were donating to me. One other concern I have is that if you look at those maps or those charts of where people are voting the most, then there are large parts of the city where a citywide candidate could say, you know what, voter turnout is super low there. I'm not gonna bother to go and get to know those neighborhoods. I know you did a really good job at walking through Dixon and, and those areas where people really feel like they are not represented. And it's very hard for them to feel that somebody from a completely different socioeconomic status is going to know their concerns and represent them. Which is a bias that, you know, may not be justified, but it's a very common opinion that I heard expressed. And so the fact that a citywide candidate could choose to skip large areas of the city as they're doing their canvassing, as they're, they're working to be elected would be a very smart, practical decision as you're using your limited time and resources in the campaign. But it increases the likelihood that these people feel underrepresented.
Ms. Ellsworth?
Yeah, I appreciate what Ms. Whipple said. Um, and I, I wonder. Yeah, I appreciate what Ms. Whipple said. Um, and I, I wonder, I wonder if there's a way, and it may not be relevant to this conversation, but in my mind, it is relevant to evaluate how citywide campaigns are funded. And if those funds come from all one part of town, is there truly, you know, a citywide, uh, input or aggregation around that candidate? I think that those beyond just votes, where campaign funds come from shows a different kind of distribution in, in support. So just something interesting. And I, I also suspect, and I bet staff knows better than I do. But when we have these conversations and when the council of 10 years from now has this conversation, I hope that they look at, excuse me, I hope they look at what influences a voter turnout. And I believe that that has to do with socioeconomics. And so if there is one part of town that has stronger socioeconomics, has better schools, has higher housing values, that, um, has less turnover. Those are areas that are more likely to turn out to vote. And if there's parts of town that are struggling, that need additional resources, that aren't creating a high quality of life, those areas may not turn out to vote, uh, at the same levels. And so that exacerbates levels of, of, of underrepresentation. And that's based on some assumptions. I'm sure staff will have better indications of causation and correlation on voter turnout, but just something to be aware of now and whoever's here in 10 years, uh, please keep that in mind.
I'm still gonna be here. Just kidding. Any additional discussion on the motion? Okay. We'll go ahead and vote on the motion. Let's go ahead and repeat the motion. It was Mr. Hanley and five, two. Was there anything else with it? No, that was it. Okay. Status quo. Bill Fillmore seconded it. All in favor? In the, so in the chamber, we had Mr. Fillmore, Mrs. McKay and Mr. Hoben. Ms. Ellsworth?
No.
Mr. Hanley?
Yes.
Okay. I forgot to mention who was opposed again. In the chamber, opposed was Mr. Shipley and Ms. Whipple. So the motion passes four, three. That will go with a five, two format. Okay. Cliff, where do we go from here? You need some?
At this point, with respect to the, the actual timeline, we can start it, I won't say whenever, but we could, if, if you don't want to cross them over. Now the redistricting site is closed for the school board decision. So you could theoretically open it up anytime and, and just start doing the council maps. But if you want to make it a little bit less confusing to people, we could put it off and maybe start it up, um, the 14th or 15th, but that would only give you about eight or 10.
So Mr. Shipley made the comment of, and I think you just made that, you know, they'd be on open city hall for the school board.
Yep.
And they'd be on
Redistricting.
Redistricting dot provo dot org.
And there would be no crossover.
Right. The, the only crossover is there's maps to, to, to talk about, but I guess, is there any indication from the, from council members if they prefer crossover or no crossover?
Somebody's digging into maps. They know the difference between the two. If, yeah, they're not, yeah.
Okay. So I guess we don't have any concerns on timeline or crossover then?
No.
Okay.
So if you, if we just wait till the, let us launch on February 10th and then that'll give two full weeks for submissions. I mean, we had 105 in two or three weeks on this one. We're, because they're smaller, we're actually expecting more. Apps. Rachel's happy. Thank you.
Thank you, staff, and Mr. Strachan and staff and, and everyone on the council. At this time, a closed meeting has not been requested. So if there is no objection, we will now adjourn by unanimous consent. Council members, please turn off your mics.